Welcome to the March 14th Workshop of the School Board of Alachua County. We are going to start with the trend report and Mr. Shellnut's presentation. Thank you, Mr. Shellnut.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent Patton, District Staff, and community members. If I can, with the Chair's permission, just begin first with some thank yous. I would very much like to thank Dr. Patton, Dr. Atria, Ms. Rohl, Dr. Edwards, Ms. Dell, who helped and provided a lot of support and assistance in this process. And there are two other individuals which are actually here, and I would be thanking everyone even if they weren't here, but credit should be given where it's deserved. And I know as part of our Board orientation, there were several Board members that talked about specifically bringing back the ABC report or things like that. So I do want to make sure I publicly give credit and thank Mr. Gilflyn, who was the Director of Data Analytics two years ago, and his team. Really, I looked in preparing this, I really pulled back the March data reports that were done both two years ago, as well as publicly thanked Ms. Besner and her team, and really kind of combined the two of them a little bit. So I do definitely want to make sure that I used both of those and began really primarily the ABC reports previously. So I do definitely want to thank again Mr. Gilflyn and his team that year, as well as Ms. Besner and her team. All of this data today, just to, it was pulled directly from Power BI, which is a wonderful tool. Even you as the Board members have access and can log into Power BI and can get access to that information. And with the Board's permission, we'll move through this presentation and be happy to field questions at the end. Quickly moving on here. First, we're beginning with attendance. And if you notice, it says July 16th, and I know the Board recognizes this, but the public, just reminding everyone, we have one school, Rawlings Elementary, that is on kind of a year-round calendar, and so that's why in a lot of these upcoming charts, you'll see July or one school, but maybe not all schools. The next slide here deals with our monthly attendance rate by grade group, and I did want to let, make sure that the public knows, Board Policy 5200 deals with excused absences. And so there's really two ways of looking at data when it comes to attendance. There is just unexcused absences, and then there's both excused and unexcused absences together. So by Board policy, parents can write up to six notes per semester. Also, things like physician notes, court ordered notes, there are, again, Board policy dictates what is allowed to be an excused absence, and there can many times be excused absences excused by the school for school-sponsored activities. Sometimes a student is out of class because they're testing, or on a field trip, or a variety of different things. So both of these graphs here show absences based on grade group, K through five, six through eight, nine through 12. And again, I used the exact same sort of heat map approach from two years ago, but you can see the difference when it comes to attendance if we're just using unexcused absences. So even though some of these excused absences may not mean that the students weren't there, for this purpose and for transparency, every attendance slide after this is going to be the excused and unexcused absences together.
Before we get further, I just wanted to ask you, how do you want to handle questions as they come at the end of each section of the report, or at the end of the full report?
Yes, ma'am. If we can, at the end of the presentation would be the preference, if possible. So again, I just want, for transparency purposes, to know that, again, it's going to be, the rest of the slides will be excused and unexcused. Here, it breaks down the monthly attendance rate by elementary schools. Again, as you can see, there was only one school that has data from July. We had six schools that have a, and again, they're ranked in order of attendance, moving down the page. Six schools that are marked at 94%, six schools that are marked at 93%, seven that are between 90 and 92. And we currently have four schools, and again, it shows you color coding based by month, as well as overall average of attendance for that. If you'll notice, there's no E-school, and I would like to let the Board and community know, the reason there's no E-school on attendance is because it's asynchronous, which means, you know, they're working at your own pace. So E-school will not be listed in any of our attendance screens, but it certainly will be on the behavior screens as well. As the Board and public know, we have three schools that are currently under school improvement status by the Bureau of School Improvement, the Florida Department of Education. So just trying to focus on this slide, that specific data involving those three schools, which are Alachua, Erby, and Rawlings. And so again, that's broken down there by month, and of course, a number of students is also at the very end of each chart. In addition to the three schools that are in our SI status, we have five schools that we refer to as fragile schools. Great news is these schools have exited state SI status, but the Board and Dr. Patton and District Staff and everyone is still providing additional support, because we want those schools to continue their gains and to move forward and continue to do that as well. So Shell, Idowild, Lake Forest, Twilliger, and Metcalf are listed on this slide. And the Board members and community, I know you'll see there's a pattern. Typically, attendance starts out strong in the beginning, and then around the winter holiday season, it tends to dip, but then tick up a little bit as we move into February, March, and April, and that's pretty standard throughout the different years. Looking at middle school, I did want to say that on this screen, High Springs and Hawthorne that are mentioned, this is only their middle school students. So they'll be mentioned, or again, High Springs was on the elementary slide, and certainly Hawthorne will be on the high school slide as well. So again, we had only one school at 94% overall average attendance from August through February, three that are in the 93, four that are above 90 to 92, and then only one school overall that is just below the 90% threshold there. Moving at our high schools, again, those high schools are listed there. Again, none of the schools are currently below 90, but you have just one at 94 at this time. Also listing are center schools, which would be Lanier and Aquin Jones. And again, this, these schools are certainly have sometimes students that are coming and going, enrolling and disenrolling, or sometimes have many different procedures and therapies and resources. But certainly, you can see by the attendance there, it's pretty consistently below 90% at those two locations. Here we have the monthly attendance rate broken down by grade group and race/ethnicity. So again, you have K through five, six through eight, nine through 12, and breaking down the different racial or ethnic groups based on that particular area. So again, you can see only one school, Rawlings, with the July data. But again, you see the December, January tends to be the most challenging times for students to be enrolled, or not enrolled, but coming to class. Here we have the district number of chronically absent students. So again, this number changes regularly, and as time goes on, you know, students are coming and going, whether they're missing more than 10% of the appropriate days. So that's broken down by elementary, middle, high, and center schools from July through Here is the percent of chronically absent students by both grade group and race/ethnicity. And so again, that's broken down by that particular area. So that maintains pretty consistent, as the Board can see across all three grade groups. Here's a very brief last slide on attendance for just kind of reviewing, to give the Board kind of a visual of where we are this year compared to last year. So all the area of the information in black would be last school year, 2324. The red would be currently this school year, and as you can see, the monthly attend, average attendance rates are almost identical across the board from August through February, and chronically absent students from there as well. And again, typically, as the year goes on, that number goes down, because there's more days of school and individuals of students coming. But that at least gives you a little bit of example of comparing this year at this time through February to last year. Quickly moving on with behavior, again, using the same type of heat map and before. This breaks down monthly discipline offenses, oops, sorry, by elementary schools. And again, the schools are listed on the left-hand column based on the number of discipline offenses by school. Let me go back one more screen here, if I may. This is the monthly discipline offenses by grade group, and so that's there together, the number of student offenses as well. I do want to let the Board and community know that the color coding legend for this slide is different than this individual school slides. That's not the case for attendance, because attendance is a percentage, no matter, if you have a school of 2,000 or a school of 200, it's still a percentage. So in this information, it's a little bit different because of the overall numbers, so, but it does kind of show you some patterns and some trends, and certainly discipline offenses in middle schools from that perspective. Again, here is our elementary schools individually, so the schools are listed in the left, and again, Alachua E-school is listed on here, because it's still possible in theory for an E-school student to violate the student code of conduct, but what the Board will see is there were no discipline offenses for E-school students this year across all grade levels. But again, in moving this, please do take note that the color-coded legend did change, so that's now 200 below 50, and I tried to use a very similar to the data report from two years ago. So again, you can see those schools, you can see by month when those tend to tick up or when those may be moving down. Here is, again, monthly discipline offenses by middle school. And again, middle schools are listed from left, on the left down through there, with both the number of students with offenses, as well as the total enrollment for each Here's our monthly discipline offenses by high schools. Can you get Madam Chair, if I'm moving too quickly, I don't, I don't want to rush through, And here is our monthly discipline offenses by center schools. And to give the Board an example of what are the most common discipline offenses, on Slide 20, this is broken down again, the elementary schools are in red, middle schools in black, gray would be our high schools. And as you can see, classroom disruption is common among all three areas. Unsaved act is either first or second in both elementary and middle. Skipping, you get to middle and high, but that certainly is the number of discipline offenses from July through February. That is sort of the four most common offenses on each grade level throughout the school year through February. We have the monthly distribution of discipline offenses. This is broken down by grade group and race/ethnicity. So again, the top, we have K through fifth grade, then middle school, then high school, and that's also broken down individually by month. I didn't want to break it down further than that, because want to make sure we're not identifying individuals certain by schools, but if that's something the Board wishes to have, we can certainly provide that as well. Discipline counts by tier, and again, in looking at this information, this represents obviously the same group instead of numbers for MTSS and focusing on those different tiers. So tier, really, you have tier with no referrals, no discipline offenses. And so the pie chart on the left deals with number of students, the pie chart on the right deals with percentage of students. And so as you can see, 86% of our students have no discipline offenses this year, and so if you combine that with only one discipline offense, 92%, which is the large supermajority of our students, either have zero or one offense. And then again, the numbers are broken down further if you're two through five or six and above. Out-of-school suspension days, again, broken down, shows you the number of days suspended out of school, as well as the number of students receiving each of those suspension. And please note that the bar chart on the right, the column there, is a combination of all of those numbers. We now have the out-of-school suspension days broken down by race/ethnicity, and the chart on the right just lets you know the number of students. So for example, you may have 110 Hispanic students, and then they collectively had 482 out-of-days, out-of-school suspension days. So that breaks down for you suspensions, again, broken down by race with the numbers of students there, for you to see that as well. And then breaking down in a pie chart, the percent of out-of-school suspension days by race and ethnicity, that's another way to kind of visualize that, and while there were a very small number of out-of-school suspensions by American Indian, by Pacific Islander, it wound up being .2, .4, so for transparency purposes, that wasn't showing up well on the pie chart. So I do want to make sure that it's among Black, Hispanic, multiracial, and white students. Data review for 2324, comparing last year to this year, you can see both the number of discipline offenses broken down by grade. So we're pretty significantly down in our high school, a little bit down in middle school, but we are a little bit up in elementary school. And then as well, you can see, we are up in both elementary and middle in number of out-of-school suspension days in elementary and middle, but down a little bit in high school. So that gives the Board and community just a little bit of comparison from this year to last year. Moving to core academics, very excited about K-12 Lift. For the core academics portion, Madam Chair, I'm going to talk a little bit about K-12 and show the data from that, and then I'm going to turn over to Dr. Patton, who is going to discuss, I think, the data dialogue component of that, and I'm happy to jump in anytime that she wishes. But K-12 Lift is an amazing tool. It really is an amazing tool. It provides tremendous actionable data that administrators and teachers can use, and combining that with data dialogues, I think is truly a grand slam, in providing just an immense opportunity to reallocate resources, to find high needs, and to act immediately. I know the Board members, and for the public to make sure they're aware, each of our Board members already attended a actual training with our building principals when they were here. So I don't want to offend the Board. I know you guys attended the training, but certainly for the public, I'm going to hit some of those points so that they're aware a little bit about this too. But I do think it's important and great for our community to know that all four Board members attended different trainings with our building principals, as they learned the same opportunity. So I know Board members, you're very familiar about this as well. It is very important, and I just want to make sure that our public know, I know the Board knows this, on the upcoming data charts, you're going to see a couple of, let's say, Growth Indicator 1 and Growth Indicator 2. You'll also see 3 and above. I think most of the public knows, based on the current state grading scale, 3 on a 1 to a 5, 3, 4, or 5 is considered proficient at or above grade level. But there are additional columns in the charts, so a lot of times, when any of the members of the public see Growth Indicator 1, what that really is saying is, has a student earned, or had learned on pace to learn a year's material in a year's time? And one of the most important things that I love about K-12 Lift is, instead of focusing on scale scores, because like, for example, state PM2 is scale scores, it's kind of hard if my daughter comes home and says, "Dad, I scored a 242 on the FAS test." Most people don't know, you know, what does that mean? What's great about K-12 is it takes that, but puts it into percentiles. And so that way, if my daughter comes home and says she's in the 80th percentile, that's something more that we can, is much easier to understand and to move through and to help. And so when we're dealing with the data and the percentiles, you know if a student has learned a year's material in a time, because they have either maintained or increased their percentile from last year to this year. So anytime you'll see a percentage in Growth Indicator 1, that's what percentage of students are on pace to learn a year's material in time in that year. And then Growth Indicator 2 is, is a student learning quickly enough? So part of that too would be, I would use Mr. Vu, I didn't ask him about this, if Mr. Vu and I go run a race, Mr. Vu's in much better shape than I am, so he's going to be way ahead of me. And so I might get to the point where I'm running eventually, it'll take a couple of years for me to at the same pace, but in this world, I have to work even harder and move even faster to try to catch back up to Mr. Vu. And so that's really Growth Indicator 2, is how are students growing quickly enough? And the way we know that based on the data is if they're scoring 1 to a 3, they've increased their percentile to go into the next tier level, or if they're scoring at a 4 and 5, they must both maintain and their ranking and their school level. K-12 Lift provides four district kind of reports or pages that do this, and I've included all four in this presentation, and then we'll also very quickly go through the three of our SI schools and fragile schools. So again, here, please take note that ELA is all grouped together and math is grouped together. You can see the number of cohort, that's how many students in each group. And then this is when we get to the growth indicators. So again, growth, if you see Growth Indicator number 1, it's how many percent of that grade level is on pace to learn a year's material in a year's time. When you're looking at number 2, again, is, is the, how many of those students' percentage are moving quickly enough? And the very last numbered column is the percent of students that are projected, please know that that is projected, but by taking PM2 last year, or PM3 last year, PM1, PM2 data, and obviously, the more data for a student who's been in this district for many years, the stronger that correlation is. So if the Board looks, you can go down through K through 10 grade for ELA, and that shows you the percentage projected 3 or higher, and then that also, as well as for math. I did also want to let the Board know, when we're looking at fifth grade math, there was an issue where we have some of our fifth grade students that are in sixth grade math advanced kind of level course, and there was an issue with some of the programming with K-12. So there's about 350, I think, approximate students who are fifth graders that are in advanced math that are not showing up in the fifth grade specific data, so that is something to make sure from there. I'm sorry? Yes. And actually, they just literally updated and corrected that, you know, this morning, sent an email, but prior to this, you know, meeting, we didn't have that information. But they did fix that, so that'll be fixed in the rest of the data. And then last thing, moving to the right side, the graphic portion of these, it breaks down, again, the average growth from prior year, moving forward percentage-wise, in whether or not the state, you're gaining ground on peers in the state, or you're losing ground. If you notice the exclamation points, again, I know the Board members all know this, that really represents the area where the student scored, kind of with the students taught in prior years. So as the bars move to the right, you see that they're gaining ground on state peers, and if the bar is past the exclamation point as well, then that means they're moving even further, or perhaps not as, as fast there as well. So you can see, really, in just about every subject area, that we're gaining ground on state peers. Some areas we have surpassed, and a few areas where maybe not at the same level as we were last year. The next slide deals with, again, focusing the same data, but it looks at state school grade equivalents, and again, this is estimated. I always want to caution everybody, because this is really looking, again, sort of at proficiency. There are numerous areas and categories that deal with school accountability and school grades, but in breaking down this data and information, you can see, again, if you look at the top left-hand corner for our public, when you see a green line, that means it has increased. On occasion, you'll see a red line, which means that that has decreased, and I would certainly also address everyone's attention to the top right-hand corner for the legend of what those codes mean. So when you see an open circle, that is the student's FAS score from the previous school year. So you'll see that represented under each of the areas there as well. When you see kind of the one-quarter filled, or maybe 3 o'clock filled representation, that's for PM1 this year, which all of our students had to take PM1 within the first 30 days of school. And then of course, the sort of half-filled is PM2, and that was, took place with, for a lot of our schools, either in December or January, as soon as they got back from the winter holiday breaks. So overall, the good news, you can see, many areas are increasing, as we would expect and want to have. So for example, if you look, let's say, at kindergarten math, I'm just using that one as a particular, you can see where the students were overall for the district in PM1, and it shows you the growth that the students have made moving from kind of the, you know, low to mid 30s all the way up into high 50s in different areas. You can also see a little bit of dropping among 7th grade ELA and 4th grade ELA, as well as 5th grade math. So again, moving left to right, you can see, these are the percentage of students in the cohort that are expected to score a Level 4 or 5. So again, it shows you where the students have moved between PM 1, PM 2, and in cases of the prior year. And certainly with kindergarten, please note that we typically don't have as much data from kindergartners, especially if they weren't doing anything with VPK in our area. Next slide, Level 1 overtime. Please notice that the graphic, we're moving now to the left, all the other charts, you were moving to the right, because obviously, we want to decrease the number of students earning Level 1s and increase the number of those students that are meeting the proficiency guidelines. So again, switching to the graph, you can see, for example, looking at 8th grade math, as an example, where the percent of cohort protected, projected to score a Level 1 was almost 60%, and that number has dropped pretty dramatically. So if you also notice, there's five categories where the Level 1 numbers have increased a little bit, going from those areas, several of them in EA, ELA, but 2 is in math. So again, we're wanting to decrease the number of percentage, obviously, of students earning a Level 1, and increase those numbers with proficiency. So those are the district-level slides, and moving quickly to look at the three SI schools and the five fragile schools, excuse me. So we have Alachua, Erby, and Rawlings. So please note, again, Alachua is just 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, Erby is K through 2. So you'll see that. So again, this shows the schools in the district, how many students are, again, on pace to learn a year's worth of material in a year's time, as well as the number of students, are they growing quickly enough, and how, what percentage of those students are projected 3 or higher? As well as showing the, where the students are either gaining ground or losing ground to their peers. Looking also at Erby, again, that's K through 2. Do want, and the board knows this, but let the community know this, sometimes when you'll see a typed number on that, that's if the area has sort of gone beyond the plus 10 or minus 10. So whether that's, so if it's on the right-hand side, 11.4, that means that they're really, really gaining ground on their state peers, and it's sort of off the chart, whether that's moving positively or moving negatively. Rawlings Elementary, you can see as well. Slide number 37 is Idowild. So we've moved off of our three SI schools and are moving towards the fragile schools. Lake Forest Elementary. Ma'am?
Can you go back a slide?
Yeah, of course. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you say go back? I apologize.
Yes, but you went back, too, so...
Oh, my apologies.
Idowild.
Idowild, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So again, there's several areas where, at Idowild, that are losing ground. Lake Forest Elementary. Again, the percentage projected 3 or higher, as well as the different level growth indicators. So again, even though there's some areas that are losing to the peer, there's also areas where they're performing better than last year. Shell Elementary as well. Give the members of board just another minute or so, if they wanted to review those. And again, for this presentation, we focused on the SI schools and providing that, as well as the fragile schools. But every school received their own individual data, and to be honest, what I think is great from the principal perspective, is it breaks it down by student, by classroom, by subject. So for example, you could have a teacher who has four periods of his or her class where the students are performing really, really well, and maybe one period where they're not. And that leads to some great discussions of how the school and administration can support that class, if there's additional support. Sometimes you may have a team where there's multiple teachers that are performing and have data strong, and maybe someone that doesn't, and it's another good way to say, hey, maybe we need to be providing more professional development, we may need to provide some additional support and resources to help those areas, and help those teachers and those students as well. And I think it also provides fantastic data for the district office, to make sure we're focusing resources and materials in the areas where they're needed, to be able to provide that in a timely manner, and immediately change and immediately alter instruction. And that's really dealing with the next guideline of the data dialogues, and I'll turn this to Ms. Dr. Patton.
So thank you. So you'll go ahead and flip the slides for me as we go, Mr. Shellnut?
Yeah.
You'll do the slides as we go?
Yeah, I'll get them.
Yeah, back one, sorry.
Yep.
Okay. So again, I want to thank the board members for having come to our K-12 Lift trainings, just so that you could learn, as well as we learn at the same time, we appreciate that. And you've seen this graphic before, again, and that's just to remember, a lot of districts find themselves in the same place, doing great things, but going in different directions, right? So in this case, I use the arrow as that symbol to say, we want to line up how we use our data. Everybody has the same data points, it's how we use it, is the question. And what Mr. Shellnut was referring to is, in my mind, it's that simple cliche, assessment should drive instructions, we need to know where the kids are, as to how we take that next step. And that's what K-12 Lift did for us and does for us. We have lots of, we're a very data-rich county, and so what we were saying is, it's wonderful to have that data, but what are you doing with it? And then what changes are you making with it? And that's where data dialogue comes into play, it's lining up that arrow, and so to the right, you can see what we're trying to do, is get our district colors, red and black, lined up going in the same direction. So on the next screen, what you see is, I'm a big believer in Stephen Covey's The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, and one of those habits are to begin with the end in mind, so more for probably the community than the board members. This is just a graphic, so you could see, or the pictures, this was the end. It was K-12 Lift and data dialogue protocols, and then the actual data dialogue conversations, AKA dialogues. So in the right, sorry, David, back one. So on the right, you can see, in the middle is a U, that they were able to share the principals' their data, as well as then the assistant principal spoke to the attendance data. Meanwhile, on that screen behind them, the folks in the room could see the specific grade levels that they were going to be referencing, and that was a big help. But also, the big part of this isn't just their data, it was also their best practices. So when we read the evaluations from the principals, that's what they really enjoyed, was hearing each other and also getting to learn different potential strategies that they could take back to them. What they were also to do, the principals were to then go back and have their own mini data chats. And again, many of our principals are so used to doing this routinely, so this isn't something new, it's a different, it's not, using data isn't something new, it's a different iteration of how we use that data. So then they went back and then met with 3rd grade, 4th grade, 5th grade, 6th grade, 7th, whatever their groups were. And what you heard Mr. Shellnut say is, we can see a district-wide view, the principals can also see then their school's view, so if we have 5, 6th grade ELA teachers, they can see all the summary data of all their 6th grade, but they could also see teacher by teacher. But what we did ask them to do was to not get to the teacher view, that will happen over time, but when teachers don't know about the percentile looks and all of these different things, we don't want to, I use the word freak people out in the middle of the year, while they're in the middle of humming along and heading into the final stretch here. So they just referenced grade level, right? But what was fascinating was how many principals came back and told us, well, they came right down to our office and said, could I see my own individual classroom? That's really the height of it all, that's where we want to get, but you can't start there if we've not had collective conversations by those departments or grade levels. But just interesting, again, because good people, and that's what we have, good, great people, they want to know, just like we want to know, where are we at? What can we do to do one step better? Okay, next screen. So then, these are protocols, so then, why this says elementary school protocols is because, although everyone has ELA, it starts varying by levels, right? So the ELA and math and science, for in the elementary protocols, would have been similar to then middle and high school. But then in middle school, they actually picked up, for example, algebra. So they talked about 6th, 7th, 8th grade, but then also algebra, because we are an incredible district, offering advanced math courses. And then in high school, it picked up additional, like, I'm sorry, algebra, then geometry, and they pick up social studies varies, like 7th grade and civics. So they were customized, in other words, there's not one protocol for all the schools, because it's by your level and what were the tested grade levels. And again, because we have AMES testing, this and that here, we're able to actually do a data dialogue protocols for all of the tested subject areas. So you can't just click a finger and make that happen if it's not part of what your routine practices are. The difference with data dialogue is, it then makes sure that you've given those tests. So what, what a lot of the principals found out is, they didn't realize, like 8th grade science, maybe only half of the kids took it. So they're then trying to make decisions off only half of the kids' data versus all. So it's what happens, wasn't here when they took that, so it's okay, but what'll happen in the future is, they'll ensure that the kids take it, because they want to make the right decision, but if they don't take the test, they can't make the right decision. So also, generally, what comes up, came up again, too, well, we have to have the kids taken more seriously, right? So then we're going to work with the principals, and they will come up with it, not me, they'll come up and say, so what percent could we give as, like, is it a 5% of the midterm exam? Like, what is it, so that the kids have that extra incentive to make sure that they're taking it seriously? Because we're making decisions off their responses. So again, thank you. This was a middle school sample, but what you can see is, these are a lot of boxes, right? As I call them, a lot of gray boxes, a lot of thinking. And what I'm so proud of what they did, people get worried about, oh, we're going to have these conversations, and people are going to hear what I have to say, and I have to talk in front of my colleagues. Yes to all of that, but that's not where the power is. The power are in these protocols, and that really deep dive into what is an increase, what's decreasing, what about Level 1 kids, what about this, what about that? So that's really where they learn. And I talked to a couple of principals ahead of time, and I made sure to make my comments exactly at the beginning about this. The purpose, really, of data dialogue is that you will know your school better than you've ever known your school. That's what every single principal told us. We know our school better now, in particularly middle and high school, because the complexities grow, right? You start adding in more kids, not only more number of kids, the gaps get bigger, right? Because in up to 5th grade, your gap is only so big. By 8th grade, that gap can be bigger, that we work to close, and certainly by high school. So it's also very difficult for a principal to actually have their arms wrapped around their entire school and know everything, but this guides that thinking for them, and that's what I'm so proud about, of our principals, how much they all even said, I know so much more about my kids now. And that's our goal, right? So on the next screen, I do want to stop, though. So that was the individual, let's look at elementary, let's look at middle, let's look at high school, lots of pages, lots of good, different information. And we say principals know their school, let's not kid ourselves. The district knows the schools better, too, because we read all of these. So we say it's principal, it's not really. So as you saw in that first picture, the room was lined with different curriculum support people, our cabinet people, and I'm just going to divert for one second. Although we're talking student achievement, also data dialogues provides other opportunities. I will give you an example. We have one of the best, Maria Yunus, I mean, and what she does in our operation side's fantastic. But there were like, three or four schools that kept talking about a late bus. So because we keep the cabinet in here, they could hear anything and everything a principal says, right? For a reason. So these three or four schools, by school number 2, Maria asked, could I just ask a couple of questions, you know? So she called her people, they had not heard, so somehow or another, the late buses are getting reported in, where she thought, and her director thought, they're not. So bottom line is, within two days of data dialogue, Maria already put a whole new hotline spot in, just for late buses, that solved that problem. Like, the one principal sat there and said, it's been late the entire year, they've missed part of first period. They've been calling, but Maria doesn't know. That's the beauty of data dialogue. That could take three months to get that solved, or it could be solved in two days, because the person's hearing it. So again, I just don't want you to think that the only thing that comes out of it is student achievement, because it really opens up a lot of other conversations, too. Okay, so let's take a look here, quick, whoops, sorry, back one, sorry. So this is just a high school example on the left of 9th and 10th grade, but those same boxes, 9th and 10th, would have looked the same in 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, and now 9th and 10th. So just to go back again, what Mr. Shellnut talked about, the two questions that they had to answer was then, what's that percent of kids that are on pace to learn a year's material in a year's time? And then, what percent are learning quickly enough? So it's wonderful to be here, we kind of translate the learning quickly enough, as in our learning gains kids, because that's a big part of our accountability piece. So they could share an adjustment, as in one, and then they could share their best practice. And they chose, for example, let's just say I'm our principal at Eastside, so he would sit there and say, I'm going to talk about my 9th grade, that's where my biggest problem was. So that's why at the bottom, it said, like, which grade level presents the greatest concern in ELA, based on the data, and what specific strategies? Because we couldn't be there for five days to analyze data. And again, the power isn't what you said in front of us, the power was completing all of this ahead of time. So then he would choose to talk about that 9th grade. So what I told the principals, because I know what happens, it's just human nature, is when you have to talk about your data in front of people for the first time in a whole room full, it's a little nerve-wracking, even though you know it, because you've been working on it. But they were phenomenal, they were not good, they were phenomenal, and they really told stories and this and that. But what we told them is, you can read right off your paper, that's fine, there's so much, we don't care. But they did, I'm just telling you, a phenomenal job. So in the middle, what you can see is, then the high schools, again, as the levels increase, so do the complexities increase. So only high schools had this piece, the graduation assessment requirements. And again, I want to thank, too, all of our staff, but in particular, Mrs. Dell and Mrs. Bestner. I'm happy that they don't have additional problems in their life, for how many times I came back around and said, could we do this, could we do that, what about this, let's look at this? And they were so sweet, and I think they, too, like me, were proud of the end result, really proud of the end result, because the tighter these protocols were, the better the principals could do. And they really told stories and this and that. But what we told them is, you can read right off your paper. That's fine, there's so much, we don't care. But they did, I'm just telling you, a phenomenal job. So in the middle, what you can see is then the high schools, again, as the levels increase, so do the complexities increase. So only high schools had this piece, the graduation assessment requirements. And again, I want to thank to all of our staff, but in particular, Mrs. Dell and Mrs. Bestner. I'm, I'm happy that they don't have additional problems in their life, for how many times I came back around and said, could we do this? Could we do that? What about this? Let's look at this. And they were so sweet, and I think they too, like me, were proud of the end result, really proud of the end result. Because the tighter these protocols were, the better the principals could do. If you make it too loose and sloppy, you're straining principals. That isn't the goal. The goal is to have them just get right to it. So here are the high schools. So what you can see is then they were asked for an example, the number of students missing the algebra one requirement as a junior, right? So we're asking, where are you at with the juniors? And at this point in February, with about four months left, where are you at with the seniors? How many? And then we asked the same question about ELA. Where are you at? How many kids, in other words, haven't graduated or crossed that line for graduation in 11th grade and 12th grade? And I know what will happen. In a year from now, they're going to be able to say, it is 18 kids, I have them all in one class here, we just moved the teacher, she went out on leave, so I put another person. That's what'll happen. What'll happen too is when someone goes out on leave, they're going to say, look, my media center has a elementary degree, we put her in fourth grade, it's a tested grade level, we put somebody else in the media center because it's the last three months. They will become data surgeons and make incredible decisions. I will use Shell Elementary, one of the two schools I shared with you. I had a while in Shell that I was the most concerned about in January. So when we visited Shell, had a whole long talk, and when we were done there, and he shared it at data dialogue, he took his BRT and I forget the other position. All the coaching in the world was not going to be able to move that fourth grade teacher where we needed, and it's February 1st. So good for him, that's a hard thing to do. But that data showed a story that you cannot keep having her here, we're going to lose that school. So because of these conversations, and he's able to move, so he used that as an example. So then again, the average daily attendance, if you can flip the screen there, Mr. Shellnut? I did this one separately, because attendance is huge. You know that, you've been on talking attendance data for a long time. We should always want to talk attendance. But here, we talk about it a little bit differently, because we were saying, pinpoint where, and we picked the date, I think it was February 11th. So where were you on your attendance last year at this time? Where are you on your attendance? Yeah, there it was, February 11th. And then we talked about your total school enrollments, because people will say, well, it's 4% of my kids. What's 4% of your kids? Is that 20 kids? Is that 75 kids? So we guided them to help think, right? So how did we guide them? We said, what's your total school enrollment? Say you have 1,200 kids. The total number of students missing more than 10% of the school days. So what is that number? Was it 17? Was it 56? And then your total enrollment missing more, the percent of the days of your whole school? And then what did we do? We broke it down by third grade, then your fourth graders, then your fifth graders. So that did the same for sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. Why? Because it helped them see, I actually have a problem in sixth grade. I actually have a problem with my ninth graders or my 11th graders. Where was that problem? And then all the elementaries quickly came to the same assumption that everybody knows. But when you hear it across the board from all your colleagues, you realize it's not you. It's kindergarten. They sneeze, the parents keep them home. Bring them to us. But it dramatically shows, and every single one of the 22 schools says the same. But if you don't talk about things collectively, you think, oh my gosh, it's my kindergarten, it's all the kindergartners. So as a district, that's why we, that tells us again, we have to do more to help educate our parents. If your kid's at kindergarten, send them. Don't keep them home. They're losing instruction from fundamental years. So for us, that chronic absence was a big thing, because Mr. Shellnut had come to me and said, should I put the data in? So we tried to enhance some of the ABC reports here, like, we wanted to be sure we compared last year's overall attendance and behavior data to last year, so we could see where are we? So although our attendance is doing well, our chronic absence is doing worse. So that's why this was good for us to call out chronic absent kids, because these are the kids that are, first off, obviously, missing more school. They're also the kids that are in your bottom 25% that show up in multiple, as I call it, multiple boxes on the accountability test. So then we could ask, and they had to answer, what are you doing for your chronically absent kids different right now than what you did at the beginning of the year? That's the point. It's what are you doing when we have these conversations now? And it took a little coaching, because what do people want to do? They want to tell you everything they've been doing all year. That's not the point of data dialogue. Whatever you've been doing is wonderful, but as of February, what are you doing differently based on this data? So you could tell, and so finally, only a couple of times, I nicely interject and said, that's wonderful what you've been doing, but what are you doing different as of today, from now to the rest of the year? Because what we've been doing has been okay, but we need to change. But that was very few schools. Most of them did exactly that. They didn't sit and talk about what they've been doing. They got, because you only get seven minutes and 10 minutes for secondary. So it was a great, they, they were the, my two most favorite days since I've been here, because when everybody gets to learn and grow, and we at the district get to learn and grow, those are powerful days, very powerful days. So I'm sorry I talked down a little bit much, but it's the first time we did it, and I don't want just you, I've kind of talked with you individually about it, but I definitely want our community to know too, they're doing great things here. We can always keep doing better, but that was a huge lift for all of us collectively, school sites and district, just to see where are we actually at? So with that, should we go back to the beginning and start with questions from, it's really chunked into three presentations, attendance, behavior, core academics? Is that the easiest way, is to start back at the beginning with attendance? Anybody that has questions and move to behavior and move to core academics? Is that a good way, board?
I think that would make sense, so we're not creeping around.
Okay. So want to start in that first section, like, right from page two, or page three? And anybody want to go in order or whatever?
Oh, Ms. Tertan, sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Shellnut, thank you Dr. Patton for that. And I'm glad to, for us to have this report back to see it, but I do want to say I'm not in favor of us just having data, just reports just for that. And I'm going to lead with what I've, what I always have led with when we started this. So tell me, as you just alluded to Dr. Patton, what are we doing different? Because I know we're not, this isn't intended to bash anybody, but really, at this juncture in where we are, and at my spot, in sitting as a board member, we are, we've always had data, and I just really want us, and I'm glad to hear that we, K-12, the goal of that is to get us to be changing our practice, because I, that hasn't been what I felt we've done, right? And so, input, output, student outcomes, that's what I always try to focus on. So we have, we do have an attendance issue, and I don't want to say what we, that they're doing wonderful things, because we have a lot of resources, or we have resources that are, that were put in place via a certain position to impact that, right? And we're not seeing those, seeing the work, it doesn't seem like we're seeing positive or effective use of those resources. So my question is, are we checking for evidence to ensure that, that input is having a positive effect, impact on student outcomes? And when we look at the negative, and you said it, right? Children, and I've said it, children can't learn if they're not in school. Right. So we have, at certain schools, the family liaison, because I, I was very concerned about the absences by grade level, chronic absences by grade level, in the schools, because those are the schools aren't doing well. So are we looking, and I know the SI school that I'm going to, I know there were some changes made, there were some suggestions made for, to the principal about some things, and she did implement those things, some different strategies, instead of waiting until the end of the data call about absences, having her staff person call early in the morning, as soon as they take attendance, right? But we've got to, and are we getting to the root cause? We have family liaisons, we have system of care, we have McKinney Ventu, are all of those resources lining up so that we can ensure that?
Want my answer?
I, I know they, I don't need an answer, that's just a rhetorical question, I already know they're, they're not.
I think we can get our arrows lined up more. I still think we have limited resources at the district. I think they're all doing good things, but are we all lined up making sure we're, one, not replicating resources, right? And do they know what the schools are already doing collectively? So not, I, I can tell you, that's just the way it is. So what, what these kind of things teach us, right? Like, when you see chronic absence. So our absence is better than last year by a little bit, but not chronic, it's the other way around. So do we need to attack that differently? Absolutely, because if we're not, then it's going to just keep getting worse. So that, to do that, then becomes a district-wide look too. And our limited resources, what are we doing about that to begin with? So that's why it's helpful to have had us just stop and do this, so that we can see where are those holes and where do we need to continue to work. Still concerns me that we have a lot of money that are spent out with deans, yet really, I'm not sure our deans get pulled together to talk. So that's another issue in my mind. It's not a bad thing, it's just an enhancement. We're not utilizing a resource for a lot of money that I think we can use better.
Right.
Just like how we're doing data dialogues, maybe it's to do that with just our deans that work a lot with the behavior, and they're in their own school, they don't get pulled together. So just like we learn best practices up here, guarantee you the same thing would happen if we grab all those guys together. So it's a good question.
That was the.
Rhetorical or not.
That was the gist of my question. I wanted to go to behavior, so, for attendance. I am concerned, and I do, I did have, there was some talk of us doing a media campaign to help with attendance, importance of that. Do we, or some type of communications to parents and families about attendance? Did we just drop that and not decide to do that? You know, because that's really, it's really important, we, this is not like new data here, this is, and I, I guess like for me, the frustration is that, we had the temporary federal money, a lot was spent to try to improve attendance, to address that. We were trying to get students back in school. So like right now, and given our budget constraints that we're going to get to later, we, we got to look at, what's our practice? What are we doing? And if we're doing something and it's not effective, we need to change. And, and if we got, we know we don't have the money to keep doing what we've been doing, so we, we really have got to like, do things and not just talk. Like, having this data, it is really good, and it, and I, I could have bought my data notebook that I have for like years, but, but we just got to make sure we're, we're like.
To answer your question, as it relates to the attendance campaign that we proposed, we didn't have finances outside of ESAR in order to move forward with an attendance campaign for this current year. So when we did the attendance campaign last year with ESAR, whenever that happened, it was in the, it was, I don't know, probably about $10,000 in order to run the commercials and to send out the notifications and so on and so forth. So there was not funding that was provided for the attendance campaign. So that did not happen on the same scale that it did in the previous year. We don't have all of the same family liaisons that we did, as you know, there with the SI schools, but what has happened is there has been more of connection through this, the district supervision of our family liaisons to do those check-ins in terms of how they are catching, keeping record of what the family liaisons are doing. So they should be actually documenting all of the phone calls when they're occurring, having home visits. Many of those family liaisons are partnering with our social workers when they're doing home visits. And so each of those schools should be able to capture how many students they have gone to see, we have students come back. I know that many cases with the family liaisons, they have been working to ensure that families are getting food, being able to get other resources. And so there is a partnership, and one of the reasons that we changed the supervision of our family liaisons was to ensure that, because at one point, the social workers were split between two different supervisors. We put them all under one, so that they would all have the same direction and same goals and same information. They would come together in the same meeting, and then those expectations would be the same. So Ms. Carter does check with all of the social workers across the schools, and then ultimately, she will also have feed, opportunities to connect with the school principals. And so there are a lot of students who have, through the work of family liaisons, returned back to school. Some of our chronic absences are not the same children. So the chronic absences that you will see in a data set, you can't capture by what we have up there, if those are the same exact students each time. You have a total number of chronic absences, but the students themselves may change. So in some instances, it has gotten better for some kids, but now you might have a new potted, or pot or pool of children who are also now in a chronic absence. So there are different concerns related to that. Dr. Patton is absolutely right, when she says that the principals talked about doing some things that were different. I think that part of what has to happen is more the word consistent. And so when we look at what has been provided to our schools, they have been provided with information from attendance works, and there are free resources where we don't have to spend lots of money on attendance focus or chronic absenteeism. But those resources and the process that they use have to be consistently followed at each one of the schools. And so that is the end that we're working toward and making sure that our schools are connecting to the resources that we provide. And that's one of the things that we're going to be talking to them with at our next principals meeting.
And along that line too, that's why when I was listening to where we started with the reframing behavior and understanding the neurological pathways of where kids, not just kids, really even adults and human beings, but where human beings are when they get angry. And the, is it the freezes, there's four different areas. So when you listen to what we've done with a great resource, we've really done it just with our, we've not included principals, let me rephrase that. So what did we do differently since last month, two months ago, January? We have brought in the reframing behaviors with the intent of training the principals. Principals run the school, so when they're not in the know as to what's going on, to me, that's a problem. So Dr. Edwards has been great, she got the group here, we did a two-month. Overall, I again want to thank the board members again for coming to that overall, that two hours, but you get it. Like, if someone is drowning in a lake, we certainly don't sit there and say, start swimming, Pat. We try and do something, we throw something out, a stick at them, but do we do that in the classroom? Or do we just jump to point B over here? Because it could be that that child has trauma in his life, so we need to understand that before we make a leap to, let's discipline over here. All that ties together, the kid being at school, into a behavior. So the intent there is, we'll have our next training for the principals next week, with the idea that when they come back next year, they should be coached up enough that they're going to turn around and do that training in pieces over that first semester to their own faculties. I realize that's not the norm here, but that should be the norm here. If we have a district initiative as to what we're doing, you should, as the leader of the school, be the person providing that assistance. So we're helping coach up our principals to the point that they will feel comfortable enough to be able to be that leader helping drive those conversations. So I would tell you, I think we're, we're on that right pathway. We're certainly just not saying, oh, it's okay, that our data's here.
Ms. Vu.
And just to follow up on the, the family liaison, so the Dr. Edwards, it sounds like there is a lot of data collected from the family liaisons. I would love to see that in terms of the percentage of families, or at least the number of families that they are interacting with, versus how many came out of this chronically absent status into, you know, not chronically absent, maybe just averagely absent. I don't know how we would want to phrase that. And so I'd love to see that data. And then, I also have a question. I'm looking at these chronically absent student numbers compared to last year to this year, you know, and I'm hearing what you're saying, and that, you know, if we're looking at a forest, some of these trees are different. Some of them came out of blight and are now just, you know, part of the forest. But if I'm looking at the forest at every level, there is more blight. Elementary, chronically absent students up 21.1%, middle up 36.6%, high school up Yeah, and, and I'm really curious if these numbers were even pulled before they were needed for this report? And then if they were, what were the steps taken?
The whole point is, Mr. Thomas, or Vu, is that we know there's a problem with the, this. So we could have also, again, I'm very proud of this district and becoming very transparent. They didn't need to put a comparison here, they could have just put this year's data. They came to me and said, do you want us to have both years? Absolutely.
I would have asked for it anyway, so.
Well, but you didn't have to, did you? Well, you didn't ask me, I'm just going to say. So my point is, you can look very clearly on slide 13, we've held the line with attendance, minus one month where August, the, this year's data was ahead of last year's, but then it's very much the same. That's why, again, we're focused right now. That's why again, we're focused right now on the chronic absence. Schools are going to be able to focus on only so much at a time. Right now, what we've asked them to focus on are these kids here. Keep doing your overall school attendance, you know, PBISs and the thanks. But the real focus right now needs to be on these chronic absent kids. So that's why again, they had to answer to. And I'm happy next time if it helps you out, I can bring a list or I can share with you. Here are some of those things that the principals talked about, about what they're doing and particularly what they're doing differently. Happy to share that because that's what I'm proud of them, that they've stopped to say, "What we're doing is not enough. Look at these numbers." So you have to do something different. But that's why too, it's good that they have these conversations that they see. The number doesn't tell the whole story, but it sure tells a lot. That's what I say, right? Doesn't tell the whole story, but it tells a lot. So what is it? And so school by school, they had to help tell us, "What are you doing differently?" Particularly for these. Some of them, for example, one was they're assigning each of these chronically absent kids to some kind of a faculty member. Because it's not 300 kids. This is just one example, right? So that you could check in with that person. So we talked about, you know, if a kid, is it possible for us, for us to check before we toss it out there? But is it possible that as these numbers change at once a month, we could put a dot somewhere next to a grade book? Is what we did somewhere else on a different reason. But when a teacher takes attendance, they could see that kid is a chronically absent kid. Not that you don't know that, but there's a thing in front of your eyes. So if you only have three minutes in between classes or four, don't talk to the star quarterback about how he did in his football game. Grab Mrs. Dr. Rockwell to say, "Hey, you know, I see you're here today. Thanks for being here." So a lot of people will do things when you help give them, but we have to help sometimes give them those tools, right? And then say, "How about having this conversation with them even if it's only 10 seconds? Glad you're back here today, Dr. McNeely." So those are things that district can help have those conversations to help the schools to say, "How can we help too?"
And then just a clarification. I'm assuming the aggregate is traditional only? Just traditional, not including the charters? When we have the aggregate figures?
Where are you at?
Oh, just to like, for example, number of district students chronically absent, like slide 11 for example, is it just our traditional, not charter? Yeah, I just wanted to ensure.
Traditional schools, you have-
Just traditional. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
As in not charters?
As in not charters.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then like on this slide too, I would love to see just the percentage of students because just considering elementary has sixth grade levels, middle three, high school four. It kind of just doesn't really give you the accurate picture.
Same thing like we did in the data dialogue. Here's the percentage and what's-
Right, yeah.
Yep, got it.
Can I just add one thing to answer to the question?
This is the makeup, like it's not the actual of the whole group. It's just of all the chronically absent, how's it split up by? Sorry, go ahead.
So all of our schools have to do reports for truancy. And they have to report out how many students are absent for a certain number of days within a 15-day, is that better? Within a 15-day window and 30 days. So we always are able to actually capture where our chronically absent students are. Every school reports that. And our two truancy officers for the, we only have two and has been that way for a long time for our district, go out to our schools and meet with the attendance designees from schools. But that is a part of the reporting that we have to do. So our chronically students, absent students are always captured at all of our schools throughout the district.
All right, thank you very much.
They hold EPTs after those with family members. So that's a part of our requirement.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
I have a question and an observation. My first is, at Duval, my question is, I don't believe VPK, this may be from Estelle, I don't believe VPK is funded on the FTE count windows. They're funded by daily attendance. So, and then I also know, you know, we have a lot of ESC pre-K students who get pulled. They have private OT, speech, PT, doctor's appointment. So at Duval, I think it would be really beneficial for us as a district to break this out between our VPK and our pre-K ESC kids. Because if our VPK kids aren't in school, we don't get funding for them.
There's a microphone right in front of you. Thanks. What slide do you want to?
Four?
That information may not have been provided there, but the principal has done a deep data dive into her attendance for VPK and pre-K ESC. And that was part of her data dialogue conversation. So she is looking at that because we did have the discussion. VPK is funded based on the attendance of the students and they have to be there 80% of the time or we don't receive full funding. So yes, Mrs. Friedman did do a deep dive into and split that up when we discussed it at data dialogues.
So do you recall our attendance rates similar, better, or worse for just VPK compared to what we got for the whole school?
I will have to go back and look, but I can get that information.
Thanks. And then my other, this is just an observation, is that some of our lowest attendance is at our year-round school. And so I know we're working on surveys of parents and staff so we can see if that is contributing to that. And I think that's going to be really important information to get.
Yeah, it's interesting though, because like when we looked at Metcalf when we were talking at the board meeting, we just made an assumption that they're lower than Metcalf where the kids left there that wanted to go to another school. We allowed them to go there and theirs is lower than Rawlings. That was interesting to me. I just made it, that's why you look at data, right? We make an assumption and then we looked, it was like, wow, that's interesting.
Dr. Patton, before we started, moved to that, that my concern was is that we were making a very drastic change in a calendar in schools that in the past, we've seen that they've had poor attendance. And it was a quick change. I call it quick change, okay? That's what I'm going to call it. And so although it is higher than Rawlings, I mean, the Metcalf Rawlings is higher, that's good to see. It is still concerning because it's all-
Oh, it's still concerning, but it's not the lowest in the district. And neither is that. It's just, it was interesting because we had compared them to them. So that's why I like to look at the data because again, the number told a different story.
So I guess we can move on to behavior? Behavior?
That's page 14 and above for the board members.
Did you have something for attendance, Dr. McNeely? I didn't see your light.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my light on. I thought you were going down the road. But I will speak when you get ready for behavior.
Okay, because if you have something for attendance, please-
No, I do have a comment. And I want to say to the superintendent and to the staff that I'm excited about the movement, where you're going, what you have done thus far. One of the things I know that I requested that we could come to listen to the data dialogue. And I understand why you were reluctant in doing that. I clearly get it. But what I will ask, that at the next one, that maybe it could be recorded, that we could see it later?
To be honest, they were so good.
Uh huh.
They were so good. Like we didn't have our board members come for a whole year in Collier because it was a, it was very, I create a chilling effect. I know I do, you know? But they were so good. I think when we're ready for the summer, we're going to have you guys come. Because, I mean, Ms. Roll, Dr. Edwards, Debbie weren't, let me look at you two. They were, they had a room of an audience of probably about 25 people anyway. So we're going to skip up and start it because they were that good.
We don't have to, Dr.-
Just come for a little bit, in and out.
That's not good for me, but you don't have to have us there. But I don't know if Prince, if the administration would feel intimidated to know that you're taping it for us to view. I don't know how they feel.
Well, I think it'd be better to have you there, seriously. We'll do that. They were, they were so good.
It's something to think about.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
So and I think that there is no one-size-fits-all, number one, for the schools. And when we look at the chronic absenteeism, certainly we want to know, it's nice to see the graphic, the graphs, but it's more important for me to know what's changed, where is the direction now? And that's what I don't know, okay? But Chairman, Dr. Rockwell, since we are on behavior, I want to start with page 24 where it says, "Out of school suspension and look at the number of black students that we have graphed there." I want to know specifically what's going on? What do these numbers resemble? Why are all of these suspensions? And I heard Dr. Edwards state that we only have so many homeschool liaisons now. And I know how important those, that position was for me. But if the homeschool liaison is not in the homes, not coming back, in fact, not bringing the parents who need to be in the schools, that's what I'm fearing that's not occurring. I could be wrong. You can straighten me out right now. But I want to know what's happening here. The graph to me is atrocious. When I look at how many students that look like me are not there? Why? What's different? I need to know those things. And the graph is nice to show where we need to be working, but I need more information as to what took place here? What didn't happen? How, you know, how many of these kids are repeats? Those are some things that really worry me. And it's not just now with data dialogues. This has been occurring for a long, long time. I need some explanations.
Dr. McNeely, you are right. It has been occurring for a long time. And so making changes is taking a while to transform some things. There are a number of factors that we think are attributing to the data concerns. As was shared by Mr. Shownut, we are seeing some declines in the data and behavioral issues at our secondary level at the high school. It is very slight in the middle school, but there is an enormous growth of referrals at the elementary school level. Two major factors probably play into that. One of those is that reporting has changed. At the elementary school level, in the past, they have not reported referrals to the degree that we are requiring them to do that now. So we are seeing probably more of an clean and earnest depiction of the referrals that have been written at the elementary school level that did not exist before. So I can't say that we didn't have these same behaviors before, but now as showing in the data where in the past it did not. We also have a much larger number of students who have come to school not ready for school. And the socialization concerns at the elementary school level are extreme, which is why our staff had worked diligently in creating a handbook for schools for eloping, has worked on trainings and going out to schools. We also have been district-wide, working on plans that work together and working with our staff to understand all of those things. Our district has historically had many things in place to provide supports for our students. But to the point that Dr. Patton has made, they were in many different directions, different funding sources, different focuses, different processes. So when our students are moving and our teachers are moving from one school to the next, it has been very inconsistent. The messaging for parents about how we address particular things has been inconsistent. So part of what our team has been working on is trying to build a system around behavior that everyone can follow, that is consistent and we have the same understanding. The changes in the code of conduct, the language that we're using, the calibration meetings that we are having with our deans and then coming back, not just deans, but also our education and data teams are actually in those meetings with deans from each of our levels and Ms. Black and myself and behavior team members to look at the differences between how referrals are written and how we're coding those referrals and how we're responding to them. I can tell you from sitting in those meetings that it has been very different across the board. So you might have the same infraction at one school as you do as another, but different levels of days are given based on the infraction. The way the referral is written and whether you can go back and actually piece together what happened is different. How the referral itself is coded is different based on what is written. So we have taken our staff and gone through exercises where they, we randomly pull referrals and they are, and then everyone who is in this team codes it and then we talk about the why behind you coding it that way. And then we go back and we look at the code of conduct to ensure that it matches with that rationale so that we can then make decisions about whether we need to change things in the code of conduct and where training is needed for our staff across the board. I'm mentioning all of that because I think that plays largely into why you see so many referrals here. There are some things where we look at and we're like, wow, like why was that a Cessar or not an incident? Why did this particular school give seven days where another school gave two? And so that's problematic. And so we are trying to figure out the why behind it so that we can drill down and make changes. But that is part of the reason for that data and those numbers being so high. We are also working with our deans. We have meetings with them and we've changed the process of our deans' meetings. Now Mr. Warner has technical assistant meetings virtually with deans who need assistance with how to code or if they're a new dean, they have questions about that process. But our other meetings are on professional learning. How and why we do the work the way that we do it? What questions do you all have? We are working with our deans on learning to become coaches for teachers so that when we look at, so that they're not just people who are writing referrals and doling out suspensions, but how do you go into the classroom to work with a teacher to support best practices and to help a teacher recognize that, hey, if you don't have process in place, if you don't have procedures and protocols, that's probably leading to a lot of the behavioral concerns you have. So as a dean, I need to be able to have space to go into that classroom and support teachers in that way. And so we have seen and heard from deans and a lot of that. And so it's really about capitalizing on the knowledge base of our deans who are certified teachers and not just having them give suspensions out, but working with our teachers for better practices. And so we are doing that. We also are working with the Bureau of School Improvement. So where they have had a process that they have worked on, on the instructional side to provide supports. We have been working with Ms. Brusko on the behavioral side to build practices where we can go back and we can look at the work, making sure that everybody understands what is the role of the dean? Why are they in this position? It's not to be a highly-paid secretary. And there are other people who can make phone calls to parents and we can really coach staff up related to things on confidentiality. But our dean should be used to help provide the best strategies to address behavior. So we are, we've been working on that. There's a long, I'm sure Dr. Patton and Adrian could tell you, we've set a long, long, long list of all the things that we are doing and working together to create a system that helps support our schools going in the same direction, doing the same things with the same strategies. And they have been very inconsistent. Before, we had 25 or more different supports for behavioral concerns. We narrowed it down to five and we were moving to three. Like there's just too many things happening everywhere. And so when you say, "What are we doing different?" And it has taken time. Like so to your, to your point, I know the data, it's bad. Changing behavior does not happen quickly and we are not just changing, trying to change behavior of students. We're having to change it for adults as well. And so it is time-consuming, but we are building the infrastructure or system and putting it in place so that we can go in the right direction. and putting it in place so that we can go in the right direction. And so I think that is why we see, yes, the increase in the elementary level, but also the decrease at secondary. And I think if you have conversations with our staff now, you'll probably hear a lot more of the same language and more clarity around what it is that we're doing. So even in some presentations that I've gone to, I was speaking with our staff development office. I went to a presentation I was asked to sit on, to do scoring for. And through two presentations, I heard as examples of the work that was being done, the things that we're doing in the district. And I talked to them afterwards in staff development to say, they actually are doing the work we're requesting and asking of them, but we're trying. I don't know that I heard those things before. And so that's what we're doing. And I know it's taking a long time. But I do think we're making dents in progress and things. We're having lots of conversation and professional learning versus just saying, check this box in this meeting.
Dr. Edwards, you have done an exceptional job in explaining the practices that are in place at this point in making connective change. What I don't want to see happening that happens come late May, all of the phone calls that, I don't know about my colleagues, but all of the phone calls that I get because their child is not going to be stepping across the O'Connell stage to get their diploma. It happens every year. We get inundated with this and this and this. It's wonderful, all of the practices that you have placed and the superintendent for staff and the deans and administrators. But what I need to hear, how many of these parents have now been brought into the school to say, this is going to happen if you don't correct this at home? I don't know what else you can do. You said you're limited to two truant officers. You're limited in certain schools with homeschool liaisons. Then what's going to happen for those places that you can't get? I don't know if Mr. Brown is our truant officer or not. I'm saying the wrong ones. But whoever is needing to get parents into these offices, they need to be there. Because I don't want Dr. Patton to sit me down late April or middle of May and saying, all of these students, we're talking high schoolers now. These are kids who will probably not make it and will be retained or sent to an alternative placement. I'm concerned. I know my constituents are concerned. I hear it day and day and day about the behavior. And as you said, it's arising even in elementary school. But I'm real concerned with what I see here. And thank you for your eloquent discussion about what has taken place. And yes, I realize behaviors take even more time. But I'm not going to give you that luxury to say that again. I want to know exactly what changes, what has happened. You can print as many papers and we can kill many trees. But I want to actually know what is the difference than what you told us back in January and what's getting ready to happen after spring break? Especially with allocations always coming after spring break, it's going to be interesting to see where we fall with that and the differences in all of this paper that we received today. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to throw another one. Mr. Shonut, can you put up slide 16? Because this one caught me when I was looking at the numbers. It said, how is elementary having such a problem? They're elementary. So I wanted you to see what I saw. So you have to probably look at your hard copy. So look at Idlewild. What's the total number of incidences they have? Eight twenty-one. So when you see a spike in elementary, because it said it's just not normal, that elementary would just spike that high. So that's why you look, right? So when we say about what change do we make? When I saw this, guess who I had my next conversation with? Dr. Edwards said, help me understand this. And that answer is she went out and found out it's because they're doing things a little differently there. It's a new principal, new set of kids. So that's why I say data is important. Doesn't tell the whole story, but we're also kind of making a big leap about elementary when in reality, there are two schools that are leading the charge on this. Right? So that's why we look at it to say then, not that we don't have a problem across the board, but you got to also look down to see. And to be perfectly honest, that's my still last look to not just say chronic absent kids. What schools have the highest chronic absent kids? Because until we, like, I know this one because my eyes fell and killed. So that's the next look is to just see between now and the end of the year, when we have limited resources, where do we deploy those limited resources? Or even if it's not a resource, let's have a conversation deeper with them, not just at data dialogue, but a deeper one around those particular numbers. And that's why I think that's good. But if I didn't point that out, you might have a different perspective about, you know, why is elementary so different?
So I don't want to belabor the point about our disproportionality and the fact that we still continue to have a behavior problem and we need to do something different. I think Dr. McNeely brought that home. But I do have two clarifications and comments about the way the data is presented. So on the tables on pages 15 through 18, where we have these shades of blue, and you discussed, make sure you look at changes from page to page. These shades of blue are meaningless because they're raw numbers. I can look at the graph with no shading and see which number is bigger. The shading, leave the numbers, leave the raw numbers, but the shading, in my opinion, should represent the percentage of that population that represents. And I know it doesn't work exactly right because, you know, one student can have multiple offenses, but it still gives us an idea because especially when you get to, like, our middle schools, you know, Hawthorne has, or yeah, Hawthorne has 183 students. So 81 students with a discipline offense or 43 offenses? That's not super light blue, don't worry about it. Like, that's actually really concerning given the numbers that they have. It's, right, Mr. Vu calculated it out. It's 44.3%. And like, when you compare that to Oakview with 64, but they have 790 students, for them to be a darker shade of blue, it just doesn't make sense. And 17. And, you know, that carries over with our high schools as well because you have smaller high schools and much, much larger high schools. So, you know, Beaufort's being the dark, having a lot of darker shades, well, they have twice as many students almost as Eastside. They have, you know, an order of magnitude of students more than Hawthorne. So these are, you know, this color coding doesn't work. You know, same thing at A. Quinn Jones. You know, 26 events for only 108 students is actually, it's not a light blue, don't worry about it. I think I've made that point.
Dr. Rockwell, if I may, Chair. If you, I think if, what would be helpful for Mr. Shonut and for myself is if you all let us know what data it is that you really want to receive. Because although this is presented this way, our team looks at multiple sets of data. But it would be overwhelming to bring all of it in different formats.
I'm just saying, like, this is what's going to be publicly available. This is what the community is viewing. And I feel like this kind of color coding where it looks like, oh, the darker the blue, the worse it is, is kind of misleading when we're not comparing similarly sized populations.
Understood, okay.
Yeah. And then this is just a quick question.
The data is the good slide. It's how it's on there.
It's how it's presented. And then, like, I'd rather have it not color-coded at all than have color coding that can make it look like a school that's actually by proportion, they're a much bigger school, but it looks like they have this huge behavior problem. On slide 26, I just wanted to ask because it says, you know, 2324 compared to 2425. Is that 2324 through February? Or is that all of 2324 compared to this year through February?
Sorry, beginning of the year through February.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that that was apples to apples. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Vu.
Yeah, it's going back to kind of piggybacking off what Dr. Rockwell was talking about from pages 15 and through 19, right? One thing I would like to do, you put here number of students with offenses and then total enrollment. But again, that doesn't really give a great, easy visual way to look at this. I would love to add columns where it's a percent of students with offenses because, you know, I'm calculating this out here. And again, it really does change how you would look at it. Like, so for example, if I'm looking at elementary school, it's Idlewild, 31.3% of students with offenses. Lake Forest, 42.3% of students with offenses. And if I were to look at, though, the actual just shading, it makes it look like Idlewild is way worse. Idlewild is not looking good in terms of, like, discipline and offensive. But Lake Forest, in terms of ratios and percentage of students, is doing worse. So again, that should be the darker blue. And then there could be a breakdown, too. I'm not sure what the average number of offenses is per student, but like, hey, the number of students with two or more, three or more, four or more, something along those lines added as well into the columns would really help out, understand the discipline at the schools. And then the other comment I had was on the actual out-of-school suspension days. One of the things I would like to see, too, is the out-of-school suspension days broken down by school just like the number of offenses were. So all those same slides, but the actual number of out-of-school suspensions. And then the same thing, what's a percentage in terms of, like, student population or a ratio relative to the actual number of out-of-school suspensions? And then if I'm going to slide 26 here, you did mention that, you know, it was a slight increase, you know, considering the changes in discipline policy, how we're kind of refining it. But one thing, too, I don't see it as a slight increase. I see it as a major increase of out-of-school suspension days year over year. If I'm looking at K through 5, it's plus 55% in terms of out-of-school suspension days. And 6 through 8, it's plus 25%. And to me, that's big. And it seems to me the trend over the last three years is more and more out-of-school suspension days every single year while we have less and less students. And so that's actually even magnifying the issue and making it way worse than just the raw numbers. That's all.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My colleagues have covered disproportionality, so I won't say that. But I did want to, I had some of those same concerns. But on slide 20, I was wondering about what's unsafe acts? Is that the new defiance since we took defiance out?
Good guess, good guess.
Is unsafe acts now the new defiance? You know, I'm not for pushing kids out of school. I think you know that. You know how I feel about that. And I think we deal with students that have discipline issues. And I think we coach them up. You said something, I recall, I think it was like in '21, about how hard it is to, or how it takes time to change behavior, students and staff. And when we look at the graph, there was one graph. It's really, it's not all the students. The majority of the students are doing what they, you know, they are. It's just the problem. So, you know, the rules are made for the rule breakers, right? So, but I am concerned that unsafe acts now, it's just like things are just being, so that's just a concern. And I don't know how you guys will deal with it. I think that'll be training. And then my other comment that I really want us to make sure that as an organization, as, I'll go back to it. Inputs, outputs, and student outcomes, right? So you mentioned that we're doing some PD in the reframing behavior with principals, and that's going to trickle down hopefully to the schools. Are we, we got to make sure that the PD, first our teachers, for classroom management. Okay. Because the board, I think it was two fiscal year ago, they were saying they needed additional training for behavior, on behavior, right? And the board put aside resources and paid PD days. So for me as a board member, I want to know what was done on those days so we can evaluate it. Was it effective? Because we've already gotten that request. We need more PD days. So we can't keep spending money on things that aren't effective and that are not positively impacting student outcomes. And then PD on developing engaging lessons. Because I think, I mean, I've been in a lot of classrooms at different schools since I've been on the board. And I recall from when my kids were in class, if the lessons are engaging, I think there's less of a chance of the student. Kids are kids, and we can't expect kids to act like grown people. And this organization sometimes gives more grace to adult employees that break the rules and things than we do the students. And that's, I'm serious. And that's concerning to me. So I think we got to, like, really help our teachers develop engaging lessons in schools that serve children that live in poverty. I'm just going to say it. Because what I've seen in those schools, it breaks my heart. And I'm fortunate. I believe in public education. And I'm going to go to my grave if I'm fighting to preserve it and support it, right? Long after I'm on this board. But the things, and sometimes the care that happens in our schools that serve large numbers of low-income students, is it wouldn't be, it's not tolerated by other students, other families. So I think that that should really be a focus of ours, is developing good PD, professional development and so that our teachers can develop engaging lessons. They'll know how to do that and engage our students. And I think we will then start to see, and not just engaging lessons for students, also, I think adults need some training up on how to interact with families. Not just the office staff. I'm talking about everybody and how to deal. Because people have choices now.
Right.
And I don't think we focus on the people who have choices and the means to be able to move and change when they don't get treated right. Because we got a prime example of that, right? We got a master course on that this school year right here. But I think it's special care. Dr. Patton needs to be in a message to our administrators and our school staff and how we deal with people who we think that don't have an option and who can't just pick up and go. Like, some people have to take what we give them. And so I think we, as an organization, need to be real, we need to have the mindset that we're going to do right by them people even though if we think that they got to take what we give them. Because they may not have the option. Like, I sat in a room and it was told, if you don't want to come to here around school, you can file for a zone exemption. She got to provide you on transportation. I was like, what the heck? So everybody can't do that. So they got to take what we give them. Because they don't have the resources to be able to drive their kids to school. That's the mindset. That's what I heard when I was there. So I want us, as an organization, as a board and as an organization, to really work on those two things, or those three things, how we deal with our families. At least, because if we deal with them and if we raise the achievement of those students that look like me and Dr. McNeely, it's going to lift our whole, not just our organization, it's going to lift communities. it's gonna lift communities. And, and it'll take less resources to try to remediate, if we do good instruction. I think at the front end, we won't be trying to backtrack, and I just think we'll do our job better, and I think we'll, we'll have, have, it won't just be so burdensome. And I know it's not gonna be a quick turnaround, but I do think those things right there can be quick, and I think we can do the right things, and I think we'll start seeing the right outcomes. But we got a lot of inputs, but we're not, we do, we have a lot of inputs, and we hear people say the work that they're doing, but we have got to start making sure our inputs are driving positive student outcomes.
To Dr. Patton, and to Ms. Sirdan, Madam Chair, the things that you've asked for, actually, even when we had Esser before we concluded, our training was actually around all of that. Ms. Black and I led communications training, our team provided it, classroom management sessions. But because our teachers are permitted to join if they want, and not, and we don't have PD days, we can't mandate the training for all of those things. So we offer it to the people who want to receive it at schools, we give it when we have the time available, when there are people who have finances available to be able to pay, then we do that. But those trainings actually have been developed, I know with the Staff Development Office, there have been lots of training on engaging lessons, but I think that the barrier for us is the audience. How do we get the audience to make sure that that's happened consistently?
So let me jump in here. So, one of those barriers is our instructional framework. Our evaluation system here and the tool we use is like backwards 25 years. If you talk to Rollins' principal, they just started instructional empowerment with, which is the external operator that we had to.
It costs money.
It costs money, however, however, within one week before Data Dialogs, she says, "I want to talk about this at Data Dialogs," because the focus is on the student engagement piece. So, when we invest a little bit to have a broad audience, because I understand all these things, but there are solutions, that's one. I was just very blessed to walk into a place that just started, it was called something else before, it doesn't matter. The point is, I was blessed that that was the instructional framework I walked into. So you caught, and that's a tough school, Rollins, for her to make a comment within a week in their four days of training, just set it apart. So Mrs. Terry, who we asked to stop working for instructional empowerment from the last nine years, to join us full-time, I just want her to talk for a second about how, when districts change their instructional framework, you're impacting, so how do you do that? In my mind, Dr. Edwards, is that idea, that we need to look at what's our instructional framework that affects every single teacher, that it does come with training for us, it comes with principals that have faculty meetings that are able to help ensure what's the next iteration. So, Miss Terry, just like in a quick minute, could you just talk about, like, what you see as you go around, and the differences when you started with the district to where they're at?
In many of the districts that we started with, or that I started working with, when we walked through classrooms, we were seeing that students were not engaged, that the teacher was the main person there. And so, as we've worked with these districts, we get teachers to realize, going in a unit, that we're going from direct instruction to complex learning. And within using the framework of the evaluation model, it's just research-based strategies, but using that, and actually using the strategies within your evaluation model each and every day, not just when you're being observed, but using those strategies to release that learning to students. Now, it doesn't happen overnight. I'm going to tell you, we, we work hard with it, we start looking at standards-based planning, because it all starts with planning, because you just can't walk into a classroom and pull it out of your back pocket, that you're going to have a classroom that your questions are higher, that students are working together, that we use graphic organizers with them to help them talk. But that's what the model is all about, is releasing that power, if you will, from the teacher to the students, and teaching students from pre-K up through 12th grade how to work with each other, how to learn with each other, and the teacher ultimately, there's direct instruction going on, always has to be indirect instruction, but that we move away. Then we get up through, when we look at the taxonomy, then we get up into those areas that get kids thinking, that they've learned this material, now they're saying, how can I use it in a different way? And then getting into that complex learning, where kids are doing the work, and they're the ones who are taking that learning that they've had, and now they're using it in a complete different way. So that's really what the model is about, and I know at Rollins, it takes a while, but I'm gonna tell you, they're going to see, because that's what they're teaching teachers now. They're teaching them to be able to release and feel comfortable with that. Behavior management is all part of it, you know, and, but it, once we get kids involved, then there's, the behavior starts correcting itself then.
That's what we say, too. Who goes home tired at the end of the day? The kids or the teachers? The teachers. Why? Because the kids are not engaged. And, and it's, and I don't say that about, this is not about Alachua, it's about anywhere, unless you're consciously trying to look for instructional frameworks that help them understand, because we can also learn from each other far times, or far faster than just when the teacher comes back around to answer my one question at the desk. So, I don't bring a lot of things to you, but this is one I'm gonna bring, because I totally believe it, but with our budget, kind of putting it out there a little bit early, going to try and ask the guy, the company, since we have an in-house trainer from the last nine years, couldn't we get a little bit of a discount here, and let her kind of help lead our district when we have an in-house expert at that kind of a thing? Because it truly makes a difference, it truly does.
I think this is the perfect transition from our behavior into achievement discussion, because as anyone who's spent any time with children knows, when they are not engaged, when they're not busy, that's when they get into trouble. And if they're not engaged, they're also not learning. And, and I think we've, you know, we heard a lot about how things are being done differently because of the Data Dialogs, and now we're looking to change the instructional framework, that's gonna be another thing that's being done differently, and I really appreciate that.
And that principal meetings, too, now that we're having them for a whole day, not a half a day, we're gonna tie a data piece into every single principal meeting, and watch what'll happen, too, when we sit with the principals, not only, it's good that we sit with the deans, too, and APs, but principals, and look collectively at some of these same charts. It's amazing how things, because people are a little competitive, and they don't want to be here, but when they also don't even know where they're at compared to other schools, that's a problem, too. You just know what you know in your school.
And you mentioned, you know, extended principals' meetings and faculty meetings, you know?
Exactly.
If, we might not have full PD days, but you can get a lot accomplished in a 30- or 45-minute faculty meeting if you have them. And it's really important to make sure that our teachers get the information that our principals are getting at the principals' meetings. It's not fair to leave them in the dark, or send an email and say that that suffices for conveying information, so I'm excited to hear about that as well. But I want to open our discussion of academics, so we'll go the other direction, Ms. Sirdan.
Well, Dr. Patton and Mr. Shona did a really good job with this, and I've been at Rollins' High School where I am, and I am, I am encouraged, I am encouraged, for us to go forward. I am, I do have some, some areas of concern, but I am encouraged with Rollins. But just my, my only comment is really not, not a question, and it's just a question. Like, I've been here long enough, I hear about all the great work, but I just want to make sure that, and I think Dr. Patton has really proven, or she's kind of shown that, and so her team knows that she's gonna ask for follow-up, but just for the board to know what's the evidence, you know, that we have evidence that we're changing our practice, so that we can see it, and if we're not seeing it reflected in student outcomes, then we got a problem, you know? But something that was just said, I don't know by who, but about the training folks, we don't have PD days, and we can't mandate training. I, you know, education's different, I never worked in a school district before, this is my first stint in a school district, but when I was employed at my two professional jobs, I didn't have a choice about whether or not I was gonna show up at trainings. Like, there were some things that I, that my organization and my manager required and demanded, and if I wanted to get a paycheck, like, there were some things, you wouldn't get a paycheck if you didn't do certain trainings, and it was, and so I think there's, we have to kind of change our mindset, because in giving all of the liberty and latitude, we're not seeing positive things for our students, and we can't just blame families, and we can't just blame poverty. And I'm gonna say this, as I said in 2018 when I came here, children that live in poverty, their families may have some other challenges, but those children can learn. I was a child who grew up in poverty, and I could learn, right? So, we cannot, and I'm not gonna sit, and I'm not gonna, you're gonna have an argument with me, I don't have much of a voice, but we will definitely have an argument if people want to blame families and poverty, because if that's the case, then why don't we just say, all the children that live in poverty and their families, we can't serve you, there's no need in you coming here, because we cannot help you, we can't teach your kids. If that's the excuse, we're gonna fall back on. And I've heard that for far too long as a citizen and as a board member. So for me, it's getting down to brass tacks here, it's always been about brass tacks, it's always been about student achievement for me. I want to see evidence of us changing our practice and us doing what it takes to learn. The school can't do it all, but we gotta do our part. And when you tell me that we can't mandate that people that we pay taxpayer dollars, that we invest into, to come to training, that's a problem.
Let me jump in here for a second. So, there are a couple of things, because there's something called a contract here that I've never seen, like, before, it's okay, we can learn to live within it, but you go around that contract. Let me explain a couple of things. Now, Carmen, don't freak out. How do I say you go around that contract? We have teacher planning days, and in my very minimal conversations here, right? You have a very fortunate situation here, that the principal gets X number of hours, and then so does the teacher have X number of hours. You have faculty meetings that was already discussed. You have early release times that was discussed. I think it's that lack of an alignment of our arrows. Each school does whatever they want. So that's not that that's bad, but if we line up our arrows and utilize these days correctly, you get a different result. I'm a big believer in instructional empowerment, I'm a big believer, you don't try and tackle 12 elements in a year, you tackle the two or three that are the highest yield for us, starting at zero, in other words. And from there, what we did, that I think has worked well here a couple of times, when we do have those trainings, that the district provides the overarching framework, PowerPoints, that gives the principals, the principals, not somebody else, those talking points, and we use principal meetings, that's why most districts have two full principal meetings a day a month, because it takes a lot to keep everybody coached up on the same page, develop those PowerPoints that make them turnkey, that ultimately gets directly presented to teachers. They're not hearing a third layer, they're hearing it from the top right to them. When we're arrows everywhere, it depends on who that person is and their level, that's not it. And if we have a couple of newer principals, and sometimes it's not newer principals, it's veteran principals that have been in their job for 12 years, not asked to do these things, so we need to grab those folks and coach them up more. So it's not the same, there's the same generic across the board for everybody, as you moved on, whatever the concept is, in our case, engagement of students and lessons, but, so we might have to grab a couple others to give them some additional, so it can absolutely be done. Sure, it would be great if we could just, you know, have a lot of other days, but we can't say that we can't do it because of those other days. You find the time slots that we have, and we, but we have to have our arrow lined up about what the expectation is. I've had a few of the principals say to me, and, you know, good for them, you know, we're not used to doing this, we're not used to the, one of them actually asked, Dr. Atria, or one of our two executives, well, does she expect us all to do that? I thought, absolutely. I said, we're going in the same way, and when we go in the same way, when those teachers transfer, or kids transfer to schools, because they have mobility rates for kids and teachers transfer, that's fine. But when we're in different places all over the place, we're going backwards, not forward. And when they move, now it's what you guys said, how does that, and Dr. Edwards, kudos to you, and all that training that you're getting those people, and lining up the departments within here that have different, you saw me just this week, we realigned ours here, ready for after spring break, because it's not aligned, right? So we don't wait till next year, we're doing it now, as I talked individually. So I have a lot of hope for Alachua, but we have to line ourselves up, and we have to be strong from this seat down and work with people. But we at the district have to also have our arrows lined up, so that when we try and help others, I am telling you, those Data Dialogs was the first step, those people were phenomenal, they were not good, they were phenomenal, and I know that was a high expectation, but people rise, they truly rise. So I have a lot of hope for us.
It's like students, it's like.
That's my point.
My expectations of students and belief.
Absolutely.
That's what happens.
We've set the bar high, and kids will reach there. The problem is, if you don't set the bar high, you say it's okay here, therein lies the problem.
Therein lies the problem, that's my point, when we keep saying that children that are poor can't learn, and we use that as the excuse of not doing that. That's the problem, that's the problem, that's where we are. Thank you, I won't leave this time, thanks for.
Mr. Vu.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off that, too, because I'm somebody who, whose family was Vietnamese refugees. They did not teach me how to read. I went into kindergarten not knowing how to read, so I was behind for a long time. I also grew up with a family with a lot of emotional problems, they were, again, immigrants escaping war, so they've been shot at, they know what it's like to starve, they know what it's like to think they're never gonna see their parents or their families again, and so these were people who only know how to express their emotions through anger. So I was that kid, like a lot of our students, who came in behind with a lot of emotional issues, who could not express themselves, and would just cry for no reason and not understand why, like a lot of our students. I literally was just at Idlewild yesterday, and they deal with that on a constant basis. That doesn't mean students can't learn, and the trend I've seen in just the last few years here is that we're trying to give these kids a pass in some way. We're trying to say, like, your life's really hard, let's lower the bar for you, and if anything, we need to raise the bar for them, we need to expect more, because if we lower the bar for them, they're just reaching for that lowest bar in being done, and then they're not really reaching their potentials. And so, one thing I would like to push, too, is that we need to do away with the whole idea that we have flexible discipline, that we have different standards for students, I'm like, and I'm really glad that we did not pass the 50% minimum last year, because we're just really doing our kids a disservice, and we're seeing that in the numbers, we're seeing that in the discipline, we're seeing that in the academics, that we're just in a slide here. And then, respectfully, Dr. Edwards, I did have an issue when you said it's the audience when it comes to training, I don't believe it's the audience, because if I'm taking that from a different perspective, it's like a teacher saying, it's not my teaching, it's the students. We don't let teachers get a pass on that, so we shouldn't give ourselves a pass in that either. And so that's one of my biggest pushes when it comes to that. And then in just terms of academics.
Just clarify, though, because I want to make sure this is clear, when I said audience, I meant they're being present, not who people are.
Right, but you know, we're talking about the contract, you know, for pre-planning, 50% can be assigned to teachers of the district, and then 50% is free to the teachers. We pay teachers for 30 hours, we can assign 15 hours during pre-planning. So like Dr. Patton said, there's plenty of opportunity to actually have PD for our teachers, and so that, to me, that's really not an excuse not having PD days. And one thing, too, just a comment on this.
Mr. Tom, I'm very sorry, but I already forgot it twice. So, another practice we have here is that we allow our teachers to take off on teacher planning days, so that they can hold conferences at night. Gotta tell you, I get that, but I don't get that, because I've had enough people come to me and say, you know, that's not what we do, right? And I think, thank you for being honest. So, we don't ever want to say no, we always want to find a way to say yes. So with the multiple, this is again, lining up arrows, right? With the multiple days that we have for teacher days, so I'm fine, so one day, let's do that, no problem. You don't come in because you're gonna stay late at night to hold conferences. But it's one day that we select, so that we don't have, as some have explained to me, well, yeah, they do it every single time, well, then we can't ever use that time to train them. So those are things that this district needs to get lined up, and those are not options, then. Because if we allow that kind of absolute looseness, then we never have time for training, because we cannot pay. And not that we never, let me just say, we have less time to train. So, training is a major, major component, so that's us lining up, again, our arrows from the district to say, here's the expectation. We're not saying that it's not good, but you don't need all three teacher planning days to be not in school, being trained. So we'll, we'll make those things happen.
I agree with that, and I really like that idea, and I, you know, just me, from a teacher perspective, when we, in the middle of a high school. And I, you know, just me from a teacher perspective, when we, in the middle of a high school level, it's very rare you actually schedule conferences during those work nights. So you end up just more or less organizing, grading papers, doing your thing. Yeah, so we're not actually having conferences. This, and I'm so sorry, Mr. Shelnot, this may seem slightly pedantic. The percentage, relative comparison in terms of like the percentile rank of students on these tests, that data actually comes from the state, not K-12 Lift. Now, K-12 Lift uses it in a really great way, but that data does come from the state. And then one thing I would like to see added to these trend reports in the future is just that relative comparison to the state. I mean, like we're seeing how we're doing here in I guess absolute terms in Latchua County, but we're not seeing how well we're doing to the state average or other like counties in the area or even like major counties in the state. So I would like to add, see that added.
I just wanted to make an observation about how helpful the visualizations that K-12 Lift provides are. I mean, these pages, I can in a glance look at these and say, wow, the administration and staff at Tewiliger, Rawlings and Metcalf deserve some kudos and applause because in virtually every area, their students are growing faster and more than they did last year. And you know, that's a big deal. And when we just, the way we used to view the data, we would say, oh, maybe they're not doing as well as the state average or maybe they're not doing as well as the county average. But in terms of seeing, are they making a year's growth? And or are they on target to make that year's growth? And are they growing fast enough? We can see from this data that yes, they're, they're growing faster than they did last year and we're starting to make up ground. We're starting to close that gap in those schools.
Many of you were at the CAT meeting, remember at Rawlings? Where we had zero, zero, and then last year's number like 16. You could just feel that. So again, when the principal from Rawlings, Elachua, when we had that training, which one or two of you were at, she just went out of the room with, as a different person. She says, my kids are making progress. Because you use a different tool that compares that kid to where he was. So thank you for noticing it because it really, so imagine next year, because we did not show the teachers their individual page because it would have been too much at the beginning of the year or in the middle of the year. But just think, at the beginning of the year, like we learned in the training, right? What will happen is if you don't use percentiles like we are here with K-12 Lift, remember what they showed us is that they teach down because they, all the kids score poorly on PM1 because of course they don't know everything for the end of fourth grade. But when they can see, imagine what that teacher's going to say, oh my gosh. Because what did we see in data dialogue, school after school after school? The ones and twos are improving, who's not is three, fours and fives, just like we heard in the training. Because if you don't keep your eye on this percentile, you start teaching down. So those three, fours and fives are the ones slacking and the small ones, the ones and two going up. So yeah, I agree with you.
Thank you for bringing K-12 Lift in. And you know, again, kudos to Tewiliger, Rawlings and Metcalf because I can see the work they're doing in this data presentation. I'm not going to name the schools that I'm concerned about because we can all look at the data and see that. But I do want to say that probably the school I'm most concerned about, a big contributing factor to that is administrative turnover and not having that consistent leadership in the building. And I hope that that's something that we look at, making sure that our most fragile schools have really strong leaders who can, who are committed to staying there for several years. And the administrator shuffle, and if an administrator is less effective, we absolutely should not shuffle them from a school where parents are more apt to complain to a school where our community is more fragile. And I know, I don't know how often that happens, but I know that that happens in every school district.
I won't say everyone.
Well, in many.
Or we move.
Because the squeaky, you know, the squeaky wheel gets, can get the oil sometimes.
I know what you're saying.
But so I just.
I fully agree with that.
I want us, you know, I just want us to keep in mind that we, we have a school that was doing well, that is struggling tremendously and in part, we created that problem by moving administrators. So that's, that's all. Dr. McNeely. And after this, we'll have citizens on the ABC report. So I know some of you are waiting.
Madam Chair, I didn't have my night on, light on purposely. Okay, I've made my statement earlier, what I'm expecting. And the staff, again, I want to say kudos to you. And I'm hoping that the administrators and the chiefs and all of the superlatives that you are know how much we appreciate what you are doing, where you are going and what the ultimate outcome will be. I'm expecting great things from everyone. I better start on this end and come around this way. But you are doing a terrific job. You've done so much more than we could expect. And I applaud you totally for all that you do, all that you are doing and how we will reach resolution come May and June. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. And thank you, I'll echo that, thank you to all the staff and especially to Mr. Shelnot. This was a lengthy and very detailed presentation. And you know from past that I am very nitpicky about how data is presented and I had very few concerns this time and you know, same with Mr. Vu. So there were a few items, but you know, overall, this was fantastic. Thank you.
We certainly welcome the board's input and happy to make those adjustments for future presentations.
Thank you so much. And now Ms. Johnson hasn't received any forms, but if you are in the audience and would like to speak about the ABC report, please feel free to come to the podium, state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Hello? Thank you, Chair Rockwell and board members. And yes, I want to reiterate, thank you for the presentation. I do want to clarify that we do only have in our contract one day that can be swapped during, I just wanted to make some clarifications. There's only one day that can be swapped. It may not be the practice, as Dr. Patton said. But that was the agreement with the school board and the union, is that only one parent conference night could replace. And I also wanted to make the correction that during the faculty meetings, principals can direct that agenda and can do trainings and can be the instructional leaders of their school and do professional development on behavior if they wish. And that is, that happens. We have less time since we don't have early release every week currently. So we have less time for faculty meetings. But there is still plenty of time for faculty meetings that are not happening. I talk to vulnerable schools all the time and say, how many faculty meetings have you had this year? We haven't had any since pre-planning. That is what is really happening. And teachers have to attend, whatever their principals say. So I don't want the contract to be used as an excuse as why we are not getting professional development that's appropriate. But I do also want to say, and I wish Board Member Surtan was here, that unsafe acts are violence. They are, oh, here she is, good. So unsafe acts bother the teachers as well as a term, because that is violence. That's, that's either fighting or eloping. It's something that could cause physical harm. It is not defiance. That would be under classroom disruption, possibly. But unsafe acts, the biggest problem we have is violence. And that, no amount of engagement keeps kids from fighting on the bus, rolling off the bus and fighting at the school. And we can look at the number of days and what we really need to look at is what is, how are we supporting those students that need more support? What are we doing when they get OSS? How are we not having alternative programs that address that? And that would be a resource that should be used, a resource that we can support students that need more support at the elementary level. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Is there anyone else from the audience?
Good afternoon, everyone. Taylor Gilfillan, former district employee and current DAC co-chair. The hallmark of a great communicator is being able to make the complex simple. So congratulate Mr. Shelnot on being able to do that today. There was a lot of it. But even on the visuals where there's a lot going on, he was, had clear explanations for what we were actually looking at. This is the first time that the board and the public have seen disaggregated data since April 10th, 2024, almost a year. So this is a big step when we start looking past the single numbers. So like Dr. Patton said, right, when you start drilling in from the average to really look what's happening in the schools, it's a big jump. Couple of things I'd like to share. K-12 Lift just seems like an awesome tool. My, my wondering is just who has access to that? Is there a way that we've democratized that for staff and for folks to be able to really use that data and have access to it to influence their actions? A thought that came up, I know we've been talking about ICE recently a lot. A question I didn't hear answered, did we, can we get a chance to go into is, when we look at attendance data, are we seeing the impact of how students feel safer not at schools based on what's been going on with ICE? That's just a question I'd offer to consider to look at the data when we're checking out attendance. Just a few other things I think that would be helpful here. I could look at data for days, but when it comes to board members and community members being able to communicate what they've learned, a simple one pager summarizing what the big takeaways are would be really helpful. We used to have that, it was called the scorecard, just most important things on one page. The DAC recently reviewed the behavior matrix, which is here are the student behaviors and here are the aligned consequences. I think Dr. Edwards maybe mentioned that for a piece. I'd like to just see transparently how that is working. Are we being consistent across schools with behavior and how do we know? Sounds like a great report to run. Couple of pushes and calls to action. I'm just going to challenge, I think, district staff and the folks involved with this to really rethink our evaluation systems. I'm frequently hearing staff saying and suggesting that the buck stops when they click send on an email and the buck stops when a training has been done. Not whether or not the desired adult action, which we talked about, was actually achieved. So I want to push us to move past outputs to like, I did a thing to, it was effective and how do we know? And making the systems clear for that. Please post materials on time. The materials for today were posted 20 minutes after the meeting started for the public. I imagine that doesn't set the board members up for success in being able to really share their input. And it feels disenfranchising to the public who want to be able to share and bring their thoughts and comments to the table. Have a few more that'll maybe send them a follow-up email, but just what gets measured, gets managed. So I would just encourage staff and the board to continue to be very clear on what it is we are measuring to ensure we're seeing the changes we want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilfillan. And typically we don't answer, but I do want to say that the district does not keep data on students' immigration statuses. So we can't directly measure the impacts of federal changes to ICE on student attendance. But we have looked at the indirect measures. So even in the data that was presented today, we don't see any differences in the attendance trends for our Hispanic community. And when we look at the attendance trends at our ESOL center schools, we don't see any difference in even just our ESOL students. So that was something that, that we have been looking at as a district. So I did just want to clarify, Ms. Surtan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to, I came in, Ms. Ward, on your comment. I did not equate unsafe acts to defiance. What I said was, the question I ask is unsafe acts, the new defiance category? That's what I asked. Was it a catch-all for a lot of things that were subjected? I think if it's fighting and violence, it seems to be a category for, right? So my concern is that we're dumping a lot of, what's the word? I'm sorry, subjective types of things into unsafe acts. And if it is, that's my concern. I'm not saying that's what's happening. Like, and I asked the question so that we can make sure that the data is being coded so that we can support students. My goal is we have, we've invested, this board has invested and the previous board, a lot of money and resources into behavior support. So now it comes time to us to evaluate the effectiveness of those things. Evaluate the effectiveness of our strategy. Are we investing and doing the wrong things? And maybe we need change. That's the, that's the viewpoint from where I'm coming. I'm not wanting an employee to get hurt on the job. Please, don't misunderstand my questions for that. But at the same time, I don't want us to be pushing kids out of school and there being a whole lot of bias. Research suggests and supports that happening. And I'm not saying it happens here specifically. Research supports. When she said, I would really like to know, when Dr. Edwards said they did a coding transaction or exercise on how things were coded, what came to my mind was that paper bag study of how kids, children are slated based on race, where sometimes kids are looking, the adults in the rooms are looking for the wrong, a person, a child of color, a minority student. When a white child does the same thing and is ignored. That's research. That's not Ms. Surtan bringing this into that. That is what's been validated in research. And I don't want that to happen because we don't want students to feel like they're being targeted. Now, and I don't agree with students fighting and carrying on on the bus. Oh, if you hear the conversations I have with students, I'm with parents. I'm like Dr. McNeely, they stopped me in the store and they called me. And I'm going to tell you, I don't, I don't condone that. When you're right, I'm going to the mat. But when, when you're wrong and there's some things that are inexcusable, I don't, I don't take up for that. So I'm not that type of person. I want you and Ms., and Dr. Testman to know that. We're not, I don't want this to be an adversarial relationship between the board and our educators. That's not what we're here for. But we got to do a better job. And listen, if we're not doing a good job, we have to be honest with ourselves, acknowledge that, pivot and do the work to get better. Because our district and our community supports public education. They do. I do. And we got to work together hand in hand. This is not, I'm not trying to beat up on y'all and I don't want you trying to beat up on me and going out and mischaracterizing what I said. Okay, so, thank you. Thank you, Dr.
Do we have any other public comments?
Good afternoon. I'm Charlie Jackson, the president of Manhood Youth Development Foundation, which is a mentoring program here in Gainesville, Elachua County. Just, I want to hear a couple of things. One, I just want to commend Chair as well as the, as well as.
You might need to hold your mic up closer to you.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. Wow. Yeah, I just want to, Chair, commend you and the board and Superintendent Patton as well as the staff for, this is a lot of data. You crunched a lot, a lot of data. And with data, you can measure. You can't measure what you can't see. So I want to commend you all for that. I want to just reflect back almost 14 years ago. We started Manhood Youth Development Foundation for a reason. Back then, there was less than 48% of the African-American young men graduated from high school. So we started that program. I'm proud to say that a lot of what you all are doing are working. You're up past 80% now. So education is not color-based. It's a science and it's happening. So I want to commend all of you for what you do. As a parent, I've been there, I've done that. As an educator, I get it. It's a lot of work. The world's changing. People got to change. Education must change. The data you presented, I can use that data in terms of targeting young men who can benefit from our mentoring. We got to go back to one place that we didn't hear talk about just morning. That is that place called home. It's all about home. We got to put accountability back where it starts. Education is just as important as everything else to those parents and to the young people. Data, 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 data. Whether it's good or bad, you can make changes if you got your data right. And the data that you are presenting today clearly represents good, hard, solid work. And the data that you are presenting today clearly represents good, hard, solid work that's been done by good staff people. Superintendent, the elected officials, people in the public, parents can look at that data and go, oh, wow, we got problem with kids going to school? Yep. We got discipline problems? Yep. All those issues need to be community problems. This is just not a school board problem. This is our community and we have to change it. From a positive standpoint, I just want to share something with y'all. We're getting ready to load up some vans and take all young people somewhere south. So I've kind of brought some copies for spring break and I'd like to share that with the school board. I know I'm on the clock, so I got about 43 seconds. We're gonna go on a five-day road trip and we're gonna take off on Sunday. We're gonna go down to Patrick Air Force Base. At Patrick, we're gonna get a chance to tour some of the highly sophisticated equipment that the Air Force has to offer. The next day, we're gonna open up bright and early and visit NASA through a STEM process. We'll spend all day at NASA. We'll wrap up NASA. Next day, we will then head to Bethune-Cookman University, do a complete tour through Bethune-Cookman University, educating the young men again on what's going on. Once we finish Bethune-Cookman University, we're gonna end up at Mayport Naval Base in Jacksonville and we'll tour one of the most highly sophisticated warships there. Day five, we're coming back via Fort Mosaic. So there are good things happening and thank you all very, very much for your time.
Thank you so much. This is great.
Crystal Testman, ACEA. I did miss a big chunk, apologize, but I do want to thank that there is, that the data is getting better in terms of being present and reported because we are getting more reports of violence against employees and it sounds like that's consistent with referrals being reported. And referrals don't equate to a consequence necessarily. They equate to data that we need in some manner. Just want to clarify also, what we generally hear from our members is that they want people to be safe themselves and the other students. I have plenty of ESPs who are punched in the head, spit in the face, bitten, and they don't call me saying, I need this kid out of here. They want to make sure they don't get punched in the head again. So that's an important piece I want to share. And then it just occurred to me, I haven't shared this with the current superintendent, but I did ask the previous superintendent to look into this and I don't know if anybody has, but if we're running demographic data on our students' discipline, I would encourage somebody here to do it on our employees' discipline as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any callers, Mr. Foot? Is there anyone else in the audience?
I'm calling this workshop back to order at 12:49 and Mr. Remchuk has our budget presentation.
Good afternoon, Board Chair, School Board members, Dr. Patton, and thank you for joining us today in the initial budget workshop. Today, we will review key financial trends impacting our district, including the required local effort millage rate, our fiscal year 2425 budget status, enrollment trends, and the financial impact of the declining student enrollment. We will also outline the planning process for the 2526 budget. We have a full budget, or a full agenda today covering essential components of our budget planning. We will start with an overview of the required local effort and its long-term impact on school funding. Then we will assess our current budget status, enrollment trends, and funding shortfalls. Finally, we will discuss the planning process for the upcoming budget year. The required local effort, RLE, is a property tax rate set by the Florida Legislature each year. It is a critical part of how we fund public education, and it determines the portion of school funding that comes from local property taxes. One mil equals a dollar per thousand dollars of taxable property value. And districts may not levy more than the state mandated RLE without voter approval. Over the past year, we have seen a 42% decrease in the RLE rate. In fact, 2425 marks the 10th consecutive year the state has reduced the RLE and the 14th decrease in 15 years. While it has kept tax rates lower for homeowners, it has significantly reduced the amount of local funding available for public schools. If the state had maintained the RLE at previous levels, our district would have received an additional 205.7 million over the past decade. Instead, we are forced to rely more heavily on state funding, which has not kept pace with rising costs and student needs. Let's take a look at how our budget is allocated for the 2425 year. As you can see, salary benefits substitutes account for 73.6% of our general fund budget, by far the largest expenditure. Other major costs include charter school payments and 9.3%, supplies at 6.5%, and utilities such as electricity and fuel at 3.5%. The breakdown highlights the reality that the majority of our budget is tied up in essential operating costs, leaving little flexibility to absorb funding reductions. Breaking down our expenses further, 68.4% of our budget is spent directly on school-level services, with an additional 4.2% going to other school-related services. Curriculum support and central administration make up much smaller portions of the budget. These figures emphasize that the majority of the funding is directed towards school operations. As we are aware, Third Calc came out on March 3rd, and this is analysis of the Third Calc in comparison to the Second Calc. And just to kind of give everybody understanding, FEFP is the funding program that the Florida funds public schools, and these calc's show the outline of the funding we received. The First Calc, often referred to as the conference report, and the Second Calc is based off of our projected FTE enrollments that were released the previous year. Third Calc is actually based off of our actual FTE student counts. And these next two slides show the difference and the change from the Second Calc to the Third Calc. And as you see overall, due to decreased enrollment and the increase in FES, we received a decrease in our revenue of $6,558,539 reported on the Third Calc. One of the biggest financial challenges we face is that our budgeted expenditures exceed estimated revenues by 33.2 million. This is largely due to declining enrollment and reduced funding levels. We have to rely on the fund balance and capital fund transfers to sustain operations. And if you look at this chart, I want to make it clear that the numbers reported for 2017 through June 30th, 2024 are actual revenues and actual expenditures. And then the amounts shown for this fiscal year are the budgeted revenues and the budgeted expenditures. Additionally, our fund balance is projected to decline throughout the year. You will notice when we started the fiscal year, we were at 11.55%. This was due to the closeout of the previous year. When you close out the previous fiscal year, any funds that you have for money that's encumbered or for categoricals, which have to be used for a specific reason, that goes into the fund balance. And then when we go into the next year, those previously received revenues fund prior-year encumbrances and prior-year categoricals. So then, when we do the September 30th budget amendment, that's when we take that consideration, and you will notice that then the fund balance ratio was 7.26%. And as of January 31st is 6.47%. And then with the increased, or with a decreased revenue from Calc III, it is projected to be 4.41%. I want to note that 4.41% does not include transfers from the general fund's unassigned balance to fund the 2025 summer school services, negotiated teacher salary increases, possible administrator raises, and anything else that may come up that's not in the current budget. Enrollment is a critical driver of our funding. Over the past six years, we have seen a decline in our FTE student count, which directly reduces our funding allocation. I want to note that if you look at the projected 2425 FTE numbers, you will see that we had a decrease of 720 FTE for the traditional and charter schools, and an increase in the FES FTE by 635. So our actual numbers were decreased from the projected, which contributes to the loss of revenue. Looking ahead, the Office of Economic Demographic Research projects continued declines, further challenging our ability to maintain programs and services. This will cause, these declines will cause a decrease in our state funding. One of the largest factors affecting our enrollment and funding is the expansion of the Florida Empowerment Scholarship Program, often referred to as FES. Initially designed for low-income families, FES expanded in 2023 to remove income limits and enrollment caps, allowing any student in Florida to receive state funding for private school and homeschooling. The impact has been dramatic, and Elachua County alone, more than 38 million in public education funding was diverted to FES scholarships in 2425. Many of these students were never enrolled in public schools, meaning we are losing funding without a corresponding reduction in cost. Since 2021, 2122, the number of FES students in our county has increased by 262%, a trend that is expected to increase. The state's 2425 budget underestimated the number of FES students in our district by 635, leading to the decreased revenue that we've seen in Calc III. This slide shows our brick and mortar, which is also our traditional charter school FTE. It shows actual numbers for 2122, 2223, 2324, and as of Third Calc, 2425. It shows the projected numbers for 2526 and 2627, and as you see, we are projected to continuously decrease. And just for reference, about 7.3% of those numbers are charter school students. This is the forecasted FTE trends for our history of our reports for the last few years. We recently submitted our projections for the 2526 school year, and as you see, the projections are showing the decline in traditional students and an increase in FES and charter. This slide right here is a summary showing how the forecasted FTE numbers and the actual numbers caused the decrease in revenue that was showing on the Third Calc. So our estimated FES students increased and the unwaisted decreased. And that was a $6.5 million loss in revenue. When we look at the forecasted estimates for 2526, with the FES increasing by nearly 1,100 students and charter school students increasing by 200 students, it is estimated that we're going to lose around $8 million in revenue for the 2526 school year. Over two years, the total financial impact of declining enrollment and FES expansion will amount to 15 million in lost funding. This will put additional strain on our already tight budget, making it increasingly difficult to sustain current staffing levels, programs, and student services. Next steps, as we prepare for the 2526 budget process. This is the TRIM process, which is also called the Truth and Millage. It's the dates that the state has laid out that we are to follow for the budget process. Key dates include July 1st, that's when the property appraiser certifies the taxable values. July 19th, Florida DOE certifies the RLE millage rate. July 24th, the superintendent submits the budget to the school board. July 31st, there will be a public hearing to adopt the tentative budget. September 9th will be the public hearing to adopt the finalized budget. These dates are crucial as they determine the funding levels for the next school year. Given the ongoing challenges of declining enrollment and final cuts, careful planning will be necessary to protect our school district for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Remchuk. Before I open this to questions, I wanted to see if you or Superintendent Patton wanted to outline what is currently being done to save money to... Because, you know, when our fund balance drops below 5% per board policy, the superintendent has to present a plan to recover that fund balance. And I think it would be helpful to hear what's already being done and what's planned to continue to be done before we start asking questions so that we're not belaboring that.
I'll start, and then I'll go ahead and let Dr. Patton.
And we're going to bring you that at the board meeting because I kind of chatted with David Delaney and said, I think it might still be a good time to go ahead and bring that because it's under 5%, but it's a workshop. So we thought we'd bring that at the board meeting, just for the public record to see. That's a board item that we want to follow. So we'll give you the highlight now, though.
I just wanted to get the highlights.
It'll stop probably some of your questions.
Some of our questions and perhaps some audience members as well.
That was kind of exactly what I was going to say, that our intent is, because you are correct, the school board policy requires us, when we fall below 5%, to do a financial recovery plan. And that will be completed for the April 1st board meeting and will be presented at that time. We have been having discussions internally with administration to discuss that plan and what we're going to do. And I don't know how detailed you want to get on that at this time.
Yeah, so it could talk high level, right? So what we did is we froze one of various, and it's a range of things to do. If there was one thing, we'd just do it, right? So it's a range of different things. For instance, we had stopped as of February 1st. We froze all of any new positions. They had to go through an allocation committee, so you couldn't just... Those are now completely gone. There's not a discussion as of the end of March. We also went through and closed every single vacancy in the district because we have to make up $5 million for this year. It's not just about next year. So like, for instance, all of the vacancy positions, they're not all worth the same. Some have been vacant only a month, some are only vacant for two months, some might have been vacant for four months. So Mr. Remchuk has gone through to be sure when we bring you back the budget that you'll, and you'll be able to see, it's this amount for 2425, but in 2526, we'll get the whole value of that position. And just remember, like, for next year, it's not just that position. It would be that position plus all the benefits. So it's the cost of that position plus the benefits and FRS, all that stuff. So that's one, so that's...
To clarify, those are district-level positions.
Correct, all right.
For the audience, that's not, like, if there's an open teaching position.
Right, sorry, thank you. Those are district positions, right. And then historically, the district has always stopped, I think, the 1st of April, any of the school-level positions. But we have the principals next Tuesday, so we're telling them we're just stopping it one week earlier this year. So then again, all that's frozen for the school level because we don't want to hire people in right now when we know we are not going to have positions for every single person. So we want to be sure. We halt on those. Also, from our audience, one of the things that we know is we also took a look to see about how many teachers either retire, resign, generally. So it was somewhere around 200-ish last year. So we're pretty comfortable too that our teaching force, that everyone will have a position next year, maybe in a different spot, but we'd have a position for everyone as we look to look at a variety of different areas. So the district office has also already gone through and have come up with. We're not at that point of sharing who and what yet, but what can we do without? And try and find paired people to be able to produce items. So some people sit in those positions currently, some do not. So again, we'll keep looking at this over the next month. So that's another area. We also went back through, which is already done, and through the district budgets, not the school site, thank you, Dr. Rockwell. We also went through and looked very carefully, every single department, where are you at with your spending? We cut off folks in different places here with what the spending is, but obviously left in, like, what's our rate of, example, energy, right? We're not going to reduce our energy between now and the end of the year, but we can reduce our supplies. So we found like a million dollars to try and start making up that 6.5% of supplies. If you look across our district, not schools again, funds for supplies. So we have a list of quite a few things that we've already looked at. Some we've already acted on, some we will be acting on. But we can't make up $6.5 million without already having started all of those conversations. And then again, looking forward into next year. So when we bring back the budget, we'll have more detailed pieces of information. But the point is, we had to start now. We can't wait till next year when we're behind already this year. And I heard, as you heard, Dermicek mentioned, I think what we were trying to make sure we did right this year was just whatever. Last year happened, but it's a result of it. So by not having turned in a reduced FTE number, that's what put us in this position, right? We got all that money, we didn't save it aside. So last Friday, we spent three days in a row, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, looking at it, talking, thinking through what charter schools adding a grade level, what about this, what about that, so that we could try and come up with the best projection for next year so that we won't be in that same position, that we get too much money from the state. So we should be more in line next year, just to help us out moving forward. So some things, again, we're already looking for for '26, some things we're doing right now. Hope that helps a little, at least.
Yes, thank you. And I'm going to let Dr. McNeely start because I know she has another appointment. You sure? Okay, questions or comments from other board members?
Hey, I'll just thank you for Mr. Remchuk. I really appreciated just your frankness about everything. I know we're not in a great place. It's something even from afar before I took the seat that was really clear, especially you're reading just the budgets from the outside, you can see that. And then just coming in here and just kind of seeing how stark things and bad things really are, the state we are. But I really do appreciate that because, you know, we're not going to get better unless we have the honest truth about things. And I really do appreciate that, you know, since I've been on and Dr. Patton's been on, that we're committed to that. So just first, just thank you for that. And I'm seeing these things here too, and I've done a lot of like my own research on things. And it's like, it's very clear that, you know, the budget we have is really bloated. It's very clear to me that the budget we have, I almost call it like a Frankenstein. It's just a bunch of pieced-together things without any intention. And we've seen what's happened here. Our budget got out of control and it's put us in this really terrible fiscal mess. And so just, it's really clear to me that, like, a lot of things we need to do is make a lot of cuts in a lot of places. We have been avoiding these really hard decisions for over two decades. And this isn't really any comment to you, Ms. Remchuk, but it's just general comments. One thing I really wanted to think about is that under-enrolled schools really do strain our finances, and we haven't really done any type of redistricting or any type of really analysis of how do we become more efficient as a district. And so we're clearly overspending, to me, on overhead and operations. And even just at the district level, I just want to like point out some key figures just for those folks at home too. If I look about how much we spend of our budget on direct instruction, you know, that's our teachers in the classroom, it's 53% of our operating budget. Whereas you look at like counties, like a Santa Rosa, they spend 62%. Marion spends 60%. And so even just that, I don't think we're doing a great job. I look at things like, we have, we spend about, what, 2,529 per student on operations? And again, other counties like Santa Rosa spend $1,700. Also, operations costs just in general are just very inefficient. And again, I think it's a large part to do with our facilities, and we just haven't, we haven't done rezoning. Even then too, other support service FTEs and things like that, just due to the lack of rezoning, we just need more personnel to man all these schools. We have 637, and Okaloosa County has 499, and Okaloosa serves more students and does a better job than we do. Same thing with Santa Rosa, they have the same student population, they have 42 schools, we have 68. And so there's just a lot of room for improvement. I'm including like charter.
I was going to jump in.
You can't, no, no, please correct that then. Because don't say, because the people in Newbury are saying we got 68 schools. We don't control directly.
Understood, understood.
Well, and we have to be careful too, because when you compare counties, it's also how different positions are labeled in county to county. We might call an instructional reading coach that's at a school, somebody else calls it something else, and it throws into...
Right, I mean, if you're just looking at raw ratios though, if you're just looking at raw ratios, we still have, what is it?
We also have much older buildings here than other people, so therefore, it's a little bit more on... So the point is, we need to cut anyway, but I'm just want to be sure people understand. You can't just look at it at county and say it's this and it's...
I know, but even just then, it's like, if I look at our staff to student ratio in Elachua County, it's 1 to 7.7. And other counties are like size, it's like 1 to 9, 1 to 10. And so again, it's people, and I just want to brace people for like the hard facts that like we do have to make cuts. And in large part, just the fact that our budget has just ballooned. We ballooned at people at the district level, we ballooned at people just at all levels. And again, what did VAD say? I wrote it down here when I read that report. What did VAD say? Let me just find that quote really quick here. Oh, yeah, "We have too large of a facility's footprint that's straining our budget."
Right, and I'm with you, Mr. Tom, or Mr. Vu, because in reality, you've heard me tell each of you independently, time and time again, we have a one mil and a half cent sales tax. How do we have a budget problem? How do we have a budget problem? There's no way. Other people don't have either of those, and yet they have magnets, and they have art teachers and music teachers, so, because heaven help it, if that tax didn't pass here, we would be in big trouble. So totally with you on board about that we are, and you've heard me say it from the day I got here, I'm like, we are overspending up the wazoo when you look at people that don't have either of those, and they're all within their budget, and they're performing.
And the additional levies that the voters have approved allow us to spend about $2,000 more per student than the state average, and yet, what are we getting for it? So I just really do appreciate that you see all that.
I'm with you. We're taking lots of time talking about budgets this year. Not even this year, in like, two months.
Ms. Sirdan.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Vu said a lot of what my, what I've been saying, I want to be on record as saying, I've been saying this, this ain't my first rodeo. But I guess for me, we started out at $14 million, our budget, when the budget that you brought to us, we got in July, if we look at the tram. So I want to make sure that we don't do that again. With the budget that came to us in July of '24, revenue expenses or estimated appropriations were $14 million higher than projected revenue. And I was saying, hey, hey, we should not be opening up a new school, we should not be moving people from, keeping positions that we know we're not going to be, have the federal funding to pay for. And what are we going to cut? Because there were positions that were on ESAR and that were coming. So you said something that is very key, Mr. Vu, in that these are, there were some decisions that should have been made years ago, and they weren't, and the mil allowed us to not make those decisions. But there's a shifting that's happened, right? And that shifting is the way our revenue stream is coming in has changed, lack of it, right? So the state has, FES, Ms. Jeremcheck told us that, and I'm really, like, directing this to us, because as a board, we kind of got to know this stuff, right? And then we have revenue sharing now with the mil. We didn't have to share our revenue or our capital millage in the past. So just so you guys know, you know, our educational association probably saying, well, we have this, we have this, we can spend it. Well, out of the mil, just last year, $1,279 had to be shared with charters. And in the past, that was money we kept in-house, put aside for technology or for something like that. And a lot of our 1 mil reserves were used to plug a budget hole before you came on. Okay, when I pointed out, hey, we're below 5%, and so, whereas labor for several categories had been charged to the mil at 50%, they put 100% of it on, it was allowable by the ballot language, but it was not a wise choice to continue that. And I, if I'm not mistaken, the things, Ms. Jeremcheck, we have not moved that labor to back down to 50% from the mil. It had, I don't think it's gone back down to 50% from the report that you guys gave me. It looks like it's still at 100%. So, and we also have to share our local capital millage with charters now. So there's some shifting around that is happening. And the flag I also have been raising is that as our enrollment has been declining, we have not reduced our staffing. And I've shared that with the previous superintendent, and I've shared it with Dr. Patton and Ms. Jeremcheck, my, so I have this little spreadsheet here that I've been keeping up since before I was on the board, I've been keeping this. So I can kind of see it in the numbers of, you know, there's been, I didn't get reports for a while, and this is why I was making such a stink about me getting the reports, because we should have been, as a board, if I had told the staff, they bring this stuff to us, and we approve it, and when the, when the cart gets turned over, you know, who got to toe the water for that? The elected people, because we're the ones who are approving what the staff is bringing to us. And that is why, I was not trying to be difficult and not approve things, by voting no on things, but we are on a path that is unsustainable. We cannot continue to operate where we bring a, the staff brings a budget to the board, and expenses are outpacing revenue, and there's not a concrete, sustainable plan to move forward. So my comments are to us, as we set our, our goals for the board and what we like to invest our resources in going forward, that's the, we should be doing that now, right? And the adjustments that have to be made, we're not, I'm not just for doing the doge here at the district, that's not what I'm saying, but we have really have got to be very clear and aligned as a unit of elected officials as to what we want to see done, so that staff can take the, the resources that are decreasing and make decisions and bring us back a document that, that we can, that's going to get us on a path where we have some challenges ahead of us. You know, and I, I think that, like I said, you know, some things that I, I want us to look at as an organization, and I shared this with Chief Pelton and the previous superintendent before that, is safety and security. That's a requirement that we have, that is unfun, we don't get enough in that category to take care of the law enforcement. I am not for teachers, armed teachers, but we have got to figure out something different to do, because that is now taking up an increasingly higher percentage of our budget. Right, so, but we can't wait until May to, to start looking at that, because those contracts have to be renewed at the end of the fiscal year, right? By the end of fiscal year, and there are escalators or increases on a couple of those contracts. I think GPD and ASO, I think we're, this year, they'll be going up, and I think ASO, Alachua, all of them will be going up, right? So, so that's some, something that we've got to look at. You already touched on underenroll, and we have schools that are overenroll, and we are not, as an organization, doing what we promised the taxpayers we would do with our capital dollars, right? And I know things change, but we're spending money to put portables at a school that we just renovated, when we got seats, and another one, and other, other schools around. We, we have got to, like, change. So really, the things that we've been doing, and it's unfortunate that the lot, you know, they spin the bottle, and the lot has kind of fallen on us to have to deal with this. It's going to take some courage, I mean, and I, I think I share with you guys the presentation that I put together, about 40 slides. This is not a one-time thing, this has been going on for a number of years, where we have been spending more than what we've been coming in. And fund balance is like a savings account, it is the district's savings account. And just think of it in terms of your own personal bank account. If you have that in there, and you keep going and taking out money, and you don't put anything in, after a while, there's not going to be anything there to take out. And the Florida statute mandates that every district keeps 3%, and our policy is 5%. And if y'all don't think that the state will take over a district, I have shared with you all Jefferson Counties, thing, they will take it and they will keep it, and we will have the dickens trying to get it back. So we're, unfortunately, we are in a spot where we got to make some hard decisions that may be unpopular, and they may be hard, and they're going to be gut-wrenching. But I just want to really just focus us, is educating students is our charge. K-12, that is, FEP, and I know we had the pre-K ESC, but our charge is educating students and improving student outcomes. And I think y'all have heard me say that, one of the speakers at a conference a few years ago said, "Student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change." That's A.J. Cravill, "Student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change." And how we manage our funds and what we fund shows our priorities. And, and I'm just going to tell you straight up, this budget that we're in right now, to me, does not reflect my, as an individual board, priorities. So I don't know, I guess maybe the previous people, the previous board, that reflects their priorities, but it doesn't reflect mine. And I've asked Dr. Patton, and I've shared it with Ms. Jeremcheck, that I think we, the board, needs to come up with some priorities and hot things that we want to focus on. And because of the financial precariousness that we're, predicament we're in, unfortunately, one of our goals is going to be retooling our budget and getting to a place where the organization will, is, is in good standing. But right now, we're teetering on a, a edge that is not a good edge, and the, our, our employees are demanding pay increases, but as I've said, you can't, can't get blood from a turnip, so. I mean, I have, I can go back through a lot of this stuff here, but I think Ms. Jeremcheck went through it. What I, what I was really wanting is, I want us to, I think we got a, there's no way, the money's in the people and, and, and the buildings and all, so it's just some hard decisions that have to be made, and we can't keep kicking the can down the road. But, like I said, we're at 33 million there now, but when we started, it was 14 and some change, and then the six puts us at 20. So we started out behind the-
I'm, I'm going to, oh, Ms. Remchuk, did you?
Ms. Sirdan, I just wanted to thank you and kind of say that I am hopeful, I know we have a lot of challenges coming forward, and it's not going to be easy, but I can tell you myself, I think the school board agrees, Dr. Patton agrees, I know other administrators agree, that we need to make changes, and we see where we're at, and we see what's coming. And I think we're in a place that now we're all on the same page, we can do what has to be done. And I'm, it's going to be hard, but this can be done. And I think we're all in alignment, and I think it's going, we're going to do what we need to do. But, thank you, because everything you're saying is everything-
We did our barometer check last week. I talked to both of our budget people, I said, "How many have come to you since November?" And you said yes, because we have a bad habit, too, of going to budget, well, I needed this, and then somebody else tells them this, or some other thing. It's been no. No is a complete sentence since November 18th. But now, the good thing is, they don't even ask. They just, no, that's good, that's a good place to be in, that people understand, I need 300,000, I need 50, no.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Remchuk. I, I'm going to kind of co-sign most of what Mr. Vu and Ms. Sirdan said, and I'll say where I disagree in a moment, but, but I want to say, you know, I came on to this board right after the last time a recovery plan had to be put into place, and at that time, there were ESAR dollars available to create that recovery plan. And two Assistant Superintendents of Finance ago, Mr. Rela was very clear that we needed to tighten up our budget. He came with a whole presentation of, these are the challenges we're facing, these are the areas where we're overspending, and we need to look at them. And basically, all of those challenges have come to fruition, and all of those areas, or most of the same areas, have been repeated. A facilities footprint that's too large, and I mean, one of the reasons we can't compare is newer schools tend to be built larger, so we have a lot of older elementary schools that only hold about 500 kids, you can't compare that to a district that has newer growth, and all of their elementary schools hold 800. So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but the difference is still larger than it should be, even taking that into account. Our staffing allocations, especially staff that aren't directly working with students, that's something that we, we are going to have to look at, and I believe the staffing manual's coming to the April 1st meeting, but, you know, I want people to be, be prepared that, that this board is going to be making hard decisions, this administrative staff is going to be making hard decisions. I personally am committed to, I'm not going, board member raises are determined by the state of Florida, and it's a strange formula related to your county's size and your beginning teacher's salary. So our raises don't take into effect until collective bargaining with instructional staff takes into effect, but we have the opportunity individually as board members to elect to accept a raise or not, and I am not going to be accepting any raises until our budget is fixed and we can accept, and we can offer better to our faculty and staff. So I just, I'm just putting that out there, I personally will not be accepting a raise. And I currently make considerably less than I made when I was teaching, if I was still teaching, because our, our salaries are tied, they're lower than a beginning teacher's salary. I think some people think that we're, we're out here collecting six figures, we are not. But, so, you know, we're, but I want the community to know that we are taking this seriously, and, and I will say, the last two years and change have been some of the most frustrating two years and change for me, because Ms. Sirdan and I were both raising the alarm. We can't afford to do X, we can't afford to do Y, what are you cutting to pay for Z? And we're consistently outvoted, and often, I felt like, looking at the very clear budgets that Mr. Remchuk and her team have spent many hours sitting with me to explain, I feel like in the past, I was sometimes misled about where we had money that maybe we didn't have. And I, I, I don't want to say that it was intentional, some of it may have been the result of lack of consistent internal procedures. I don't want to assume people's intentions, but, but I definitely feel like there were, there were many decisions where Ms. Sirdan and I were both in dissent, but there were a few where she was in dissent, and I listened to previous staff who told me, no, there's money for this, and I regret that, and I want to take responsibility for that, because as a result of, of that, we're going to have to make some, some really, really hard decisions moving forward. And I understand that people are not going to be happy about some of the hard decisions we're going to be making. I wouldn't be happy either, I'm not happy, I'm not happy about it. But they're necessary, because as Ms. Sirdan noted, we are skating a razor's edge between being above 3% after everything is done this year and being taken over by the state. And if you think we're making hard decisions, the state would make much, much, much harder. But it wouldn't be hard for them, because this isn't their community. You know, it's hard for us, because this is our community. We, we, a lot of the people directly impacted by these decisions are my friends and my neighbors and people I care about and love. But that's not the case when the state comes and takes in. To them, it's, everything's a number and a dollar sign, not people. And so I really, I really want to hammer that home, that we are going to make some hard decisions, and you can be mad at me, I'm, I signed up for that, like, you can call me and you can tell me how mad at me you are, and I'm, I'm fine, I will listen to that and I will hear it, but I do want people to know that I'm not excited about making these decisions, I'm not happy about making these decisions, but I'm making them because I know that if I don't, whether it's this year or next year, the state will be coming in if we don't make these hard decisions, and it will be so much worse for our community. But again, thank you, Mr. Remchuk, because you have always been willing to meet with me, and when you explain our budget numbers, you answer all of my questions, and I feel like I have a much better understanding of the budget now than I did before, and I, I also know that you are, you and Dr. Patton are aligned, those arrows that we talked about for, for our district are aligned in getting this budget in order, whereas before, there were two board members in alignment in fixing the budget, and that was it. So I appreciate you both for that, thank you. Oh, yep, Ms. Sirdan.
Ms. Jeremcheck, would you go back to slide three? So required local effort is set by the legislature, and do we see, over 10 years, it started at, in this graph that she's showing here, 5.162, and it's down to 3.01. And what that, the reason I want to go back to this is, in a time of rising property values locally and in the state, the reason why that rate has decreased is because of, the state legislature said it, but they don't want us to have influx of cash. That rollback rate is to give you the same amount of money in this year that you would have gotten if you applied the rate to the previous year. So yes, we are- So, yes, we are, property values in Alachua County and the state of Florida have increased, but because the millage rate is lower, we collect less money. That's one. I wanted to hit that, I'm sorry, my comments, I got lost in that. Then, if you go to Slide 7 and 8, where she talked about the comparison and the decrease in our FTE, which led to the drop in FEFP funding, when we do the budget, and I had, have kind of hit home to you guys, y'all are gonna use a good, a better projection number for the next year, because if you start out, yeah, it's all nice and cute to start out with a higher FTE number, so you have more money to kind of do things with, but the chickens kind of come home to roost when you hit the third calc. And Slide 9, I made the point that our revenues exceeded the, our expenses exceeded revenues, and made the point about fund balance, but what I wanted to, on Slide 10, kind of bring everybody's attention to Ms. Jeremczyk, just to make sure she, that we understand what she was, there's a good understanding of why there was like this leveling out of the fund balance, the financial condition ratio, that's 7.26, when, at the end of one year, and we're rolling those balances forward, so that the categorical of the money we set aside for, because we didn't spend it in '24, we put it in the beginning balance, in the bank, so we'll have it to spend for next year, but you can't just say, "We're gonna use that for staff raises", because that money has to go towards those pre-appro, those encumprances from the prior year. And we just have to let people know that enrollment is a driver of funding, and so we really have to improve, as I said earlier, our customer service and our offerings, and make sure we're really doing that, so that public schools will be the choice of families. They have a lot of options, but that they will make the choice to choose to stay with us. That's what we want. We do this better. I believe in public education. Not that it's perfect, it needs improvement, but I believe in it. And FES, the Family Empowerment Scholarships, like, we just, we gotta improve, so that even though folks have the option, because there's no income limit, and there's no requirement to ever have been in public school in the past, we have to make ourself the entity of choice. And getting lean, being aligned, you know, not just having all these little different fichtums, that's what I call the different schools, I say, "We got 38 fichtums, everybody want to do what they want to do", and sometimes you have to, you gotta like corral the cats to get, I'm serious, we gotta, we have to get on one accord, and the tone at the top is really key. You know, I said that with folks, we have to look at that. And as we're moving forward, you know, with the projected, on Slide 19, that 8.5 million for '25, '26, I want to just emphasize, that's projected shortfall based on the knowledge we have. It could be more, it could be less, but right now, like, projected shortfall is at the top, but I think people might, I don't want us to miss that. That's a projection, the 8.5 million, because we're not in '25, '26 yet, but we do have to position ourselves to know when we go back. And the TRIM calendar, I'm just gonna come back. Ms. Jeremczyk and Dr. Patton, Ms. Sirdan might melt down if y'all bring us a budget in July. That is not good. Like, I keep everything, and I bought it, I bought it so I could show my colleagues.
I look like I'm gonna do that to you.
I don't know. I'm scarred, I keep telling you. I'm scarred, right? But, but I, listen, I want to thank you, because this isn't hard, but even though this is initial, I would have, I would have wanted, as I told Dr. Patton, to see, like, some concrete things in here that we're gonna do, like, now, because we got a crisis right now, and those few little things, I'm just not sure, I'm scared that they're not enough, but I think I would feel better if you guys could total up, this is like my third quest for this, what the vacancy is, the positions, the positions that you closed, I mean, the number and the dollar amount of the positions that have never been filled in this whole fiscal year, and then the number and the dollar amount for those that were filled, and they're vacant, and we have no intentions of filling them. So, they may have been filled from July 1 until some point in time.
We're still giving those up.
Right, but, right, so, but you're giving them up, but I want to know how much they cost.
That are closed, and there are positions we'll give up that have people in those.
That's for next year, but I'm talking about for this year, so that we can know the progress that we're making towards this.
We'll have that, because that's what I was referring to earlier. What she's doing is she's going to look at the vacancies, it's not one set number, some since September, some since last month.
You said what I said.
That's why she has to look every single position.
And that's coming on April 1, correct?
Well, I think that's for instructional staff, April 1, but she said February something was for, for me, when you gonna have a number for us, so we can see? Like, like a dollar amount more, so we can know the progress we're making towards this.
Well, I think the staffing manual is coming April 1, but also the recovery plan is coming April 1, so that's when we'll have the dollar amounts for the...
Oh, so, April 1 is when I can expect that, okay. I think also, do, the, no one said anything about software subscriptions, I mentioned that to you, and about some things that were on Essar and that were just wholesale moved to the general fund. Now, I don't know everything, but I have stuff in my past, things that we were told, but there's a lot we weren't told, right? But, we need to know, like, an evaluation tool for what we're keeping and what we're not, and if we're not, how much it costs, like...
So, the good thing is here, we're not walking into what I had the pleasure of walking into 123 different software programs. 123, that is a number you don't forget, because everybody just did whatever. Here, we appear to be very streamlined, really good, so what we just need to do is have a little bit of an evaluation process on those, just to ensure what I believe is probably right, is right, and it's not 123.
Good, okay. All right, thank you. That's, I think all I have. Another thing, Tuesday's meeting, Wednesday's meeting, I didn't mention about the MTPO, and there were two issues that we need to send a letter to, and I don't think it requires a vote, but it would be signed by our chair to Florida Department of Education, and asked them to take a look at the 301 crossing in Hawthorne as a safety hazard. The county is gonna write a letter about that. And then, back in town, by Lincoln Middle School, the road there, Waldo Road, to get some markings and lighting there by the school, like they have by the trail, or like, it's where, by Westwood, and it was suggested that we write a letter from our organization to them, and so I wanted to just mention it, and maybe you and Dr. Patton can work on that before our next meeting, I mean, like, after spring break, but before our board meeting.
Yeah, Dr. Patton, I think we can, we can handle that. Letter is about, you know, improving lighting and crosswalks and things for our students, getting to Hawthorne and Lincoln.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, thank you, and thank you for bringing that. And Mr. Vu, did you have additional?
I just wanted to do an off- clarification too, you know, we're talking a lot about cuts here, I just want to clarify for everybody at home, and especially our teachers, that the cuts are coming at Central Office District Level 2. I know, like, Dr. Patton's been having a lot of conversations with each of us about that, and potential impacts that's gonna have, but the cuts are coming, you know, from Central Office 2. I know that's something, even as members of staff, as teachers, we all know that we're really bloated up here. And again, other counties have way less central staff, way less, you know, and they are able to do the same job, or if not the same job, a better job. And one thing too, I wanted to ask for, I know this board workshop, we're generally just talking about, you know, general fund and everything like that, but I would also just like, even if it's not a workshop, even just, just like in our 101s, Dr. Patton, about, you know, our capital funds and those balances, and what our plans are, and what is the costality. I know we're, right now, still doing that, in the process of doing that needs assessment of all of our facilities, but eventually, we're just kind of like an expectation of when will we get that, especially for schools, like, and I think about schools like Hawthorne or Lincoln, and again, I'm a little biased, having worked at Lincoln, but everyone who's ever been in that building and worked in that building knows it's falling apart, like, at almost every single level.
So, that should be coming in May, but I want to broaden the scope a little, because as we've spent so many hours talking about budget in the last month, one thing that I've also now learned is, we do not even have a technology as part of our routine look in the capital plan, so we've sat with Mr. Shankar, we, it's to the tune of like $12 million when you figure out the, what we pay for our internet, what we pay for our, the software that's on our computers to make them run, what we pay for camera license, what we pay for the technology refresh that is now, because it's not a joke, it's been pay-as-you-play, it should not be, it should be on a plan that is not hit or miss, or, "Let's use Essar funds, let's use that". So, you're gonna get back, though, a full capital plan that incorporates both that assessment, but then, a full technology look, so every year, we're not trying to pick here, pick there. It's like how summer school got missed last year, how do you miss summer school? And then the third piece of that is, in that plan that's coming from that company, they don't touch at all athletic fields, it was never part of the scope, so there's actually another piece, because this athletic stuff is just interesting, and on that basis too, it'll be also, like, we don't have schedules, we don't have the schools on a painting schedule, we don't have the tracks being replaced. So, I know we're fixated on just that, you're not fixated, what we're bringing back is what the scope of that one group did, which is good, but there's two other scopes to that, that, because if we don't look at it as a whole, we're gonna be right back to where we were, trying to figure out how to do it. So, I think, because we didn't let anybody out of the room, we said, "If you come up with something else, you're personally paying for it", so it's amazing, no, I'm just joking. But I think we do have most of those big things that have never been on a capital, our knowledge of a capital plan, not the thing that we turn into the state as now.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and just thank you for that too, because that's probably something needed, especially in the technology side, I know it's even just something me and my own work with other school districts, we're really rare, and again, I mentioned this, and I still only have the cost breakdown, we're really rare in that we pay for both the Microsoft Office Suite and the Google Suite, and I think, I can't think of any other county that does that, but again, I can't say I understand the landscape.
No, no, Mr. Shankar, explain that to you, we don't need that.
We did, we did, but we do get certain things, we use, I know, Google, we get a lot of it for free, because we pay for the email suite, and then for Microsoft, we do all the other, you know, productivity suite, but then we're also paying for things like Canva, which is a presentation software too, not every school district gets that, it's just a lot, and I would just kind of like to see that overview, I know you were already talking about it, but, yeah.
Well, that's the issue, right? Like, we really should be moving to Canva, PowerPoint's already passe, so, just toss it out there, it's the same with the extension of our name, @gm.sbac.edu. So, we were proud, as we should have been, we should be proud of SBAC, 20 years ago, nobody had that. But now, in the GM, we just talked about it last night at the PTA Zoom meeting with the district people, they had no idea what is GM stand, is Google Mail. Well, that, that puts us a little bit, so, we're gonna bring back to you, and Uma's working on it, to really have it @alachwasschools.com, or .edu, or, we're missing a marketing opportunity, right? Like, when you have Dade Schools, or Lee Schools, nobody knows what GM SBAC is, and we're trying to keep kids, we want to have that sense of pride, but every email that, particularly, that goes outside, we want to, it's bragging on our name, it's a marketing tool, so you'll see that coming back too.
But, like you said, when we got SBAC...
It was ahead of its time.
Back then, it was Dade.k12FL.us.
Listen, a lot of districts still have that, and when I look, you said Santa Rosa three times, it's my very good friend, I said, "Karen, just telling you what the rest of us think about your extension".
Dr. McNeely.
Sorry.
Ms. Gavie, because you know what I call you, thank you so much for your presentation. Inasmuch that, at our board meeting on Wednesday night, and the meeting we had with the city of Gainesville on yesterday, these are some things that the superintendent and city manager will be getting together to talk about, but it's going to impact our budget, and so, I can't wait to see, maybe by April 1, what the results will be in the collaboration with the city of Gainesville, because we cannot not look at the stadium that's right down the street. So, all of that will be impacting the budget, I'm sure, and so, I will save my comments until we get to that point on the 1st of April, I just wanted you to know. And I do appreciate your presentation, we've gotten so much more information about where we might be going with Citizen Field, because we have three schools that depend on that event arena. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. I also wanted to just state for the public that anything you saw in this presentation that had to do with projections comes from the state, those aren't our internal projections. Ms. Jeremczyk got those from the Florida Department of Education, so, just so everyone knows. I also, I heard Ms. Sirdan mention having some clear board priorities, and I'm sure people listening are wondering what happened with the strategic plan, and I think one of the issues there is that a lot of work was done without representation from the finance department, and without much representation from the operations department. So, you know, when we met for strategic planning, we did not have the finance team there. So, the strategic plan that was, that was not fully approved reflects that, that budget wasn't a priority, and at the time, I actually called Cognia and expressed concerns that we were missing this really huge and really important piece of running our district, because making goals without figuring out how you're going to fund those goals just didn't make sense to me. So, I wanted to kind of mention how those two things tie in, that, you know, even if that plan, even if all of that plan had been approved by the board, we would still need to set priorities for budgeting, because it, that wasn't really captured in that planning Dr. McNeely mentioned Citizens Field, and I know, since the board meeting, I've received a lot of calls and emails about sports in general, and, you know, some of them are, "How dare you spend a single penny on sports when your general fund is in trouble"? First of all, two completely separate pots of money, we're talking general fund today, sports comes out of capital fund, but the reason we need to spend that money, I'm gonna quote Dr. Patton, "Sports are our number-one dropout prevention program. This is how we, we talked about keeping kids engaged, sports is a motivator, it keeps kids engaged, we can't have football teams if they have nowhere to play". And I know, then, we had the opposite, where parents are saying, "Every high school deserves and should have their own stadium", and I want to say, number one, that is cost prohibitive. Number two, GHS doesn't even have space for a temporary stadium, let alone a full stadium, and Buholz has space, but there are some watershed issues that would complicate that tremendously. So, that is really not an option, and not only is, does Citizens Field have historical significance to our community, but logistically, it is the least, if we can partner with the city in a reasonable way, it would be the least expensive and most logistically sound choice, because location-wise, of all the other options we have for a stadium, it is still the most centrally located to the three schools that use it, and again, if we can partner with the city, it is less expensive, it already has a lot of the existing infrastructure, or all of the existing infrastructure is already a stadium, zoning, all of those things. So, you know, I did want to take a brief moment to assure, assure the public, both in this room and listening or watching, that we are not being frivolous with building a stadium with, in partnership with the city, we're trying to be as cost-effective and frugal as possible while still meeting a significant need of our student population. frugal as possible while still meeting a significant need of our student population. And did any other board comments, or should, okay, then I'm gonna open it to the public, I know we have Ms. Ward filled out a comment form, but again, if you're in the room and haven't yet, you're still welcome to speak. Do we have any callers, Mr. Foot? Okay.
So it's my turn. Thank you, Chair Rockwell, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the budget presentation. We did receive a 1% salary proposal last night at the bargaining table, that I just will say is reflective of somebody's priorities, but it's, it needs to be a priority in this new budget to do what is best for the success of every student, and that is to retain excellent educators, and we definitely have a lot of very, very unhappy educators right now, and when we are committing to the success of every student, we should not be running off our best educators. I did appreciate Ms. Surtin's comments about looking at where we are saving from vacancies, where we are not, when we, when we are looking at our finances, I very seldom see where the district is saving money. We, we see what the expenditures are, we see what the revenue is, but all the savings that are happen, happening are rarely illustrated in any presentation, and we, I've been around a long time, the 3% threat has been over decades, I've heard the fear mongering, and I have a little fear mongering to put out there myself, that people are gonna leave our district, because they can just drive to Marion County and make $2,000 more. We have a lot of money that sometimes is left sitting on the table, like the 1 mil, there was, there was nearly $2 million left sitting on the table of the 1 mil, and that money, it should be completely spent down, because that's what the taxpayers, the ballot language did not say that the money was gonna be tabled, it should be spent down, and it's not a bad thing to have the revenue and the expenditures match when you're spending the public funds. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Ms. Rush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to ask some questions related to this data about the budget compared to the October data about the budget. In the October data, there were three tables that were presented, one with the current balance, one with the balance, one's teacher and staff salary increases have been put in, and then another adjustment based on the projected decrease in FAFP Calc III, which at that point was 3.44 million, it has now increased to 6.5 million, and I've seen how some other things changed in what was presented today, in that we are now at the 4.1, and I don't know what teacher salary increase is now being calculated in there, if it is the present offer to the union, or if it is the old offer, and what those, that information would be if the old offer was placed in. I also understand that the general fund is very limited in transfers that can come from other funds, and that is by statute, and there's not a whole lot that can be done about it. I do know that one of the transfers allowed in is borrowing from the 1.5 mil, I understand that there is a lot of reasons to do that and to not do that. I think our teachers deserve to know what money could be transferred in, so that they know how much the, the board could allocate to their salaries, and if there are other priorities, I know there's a lot of competing priorities, we've heard how Lincoln's not in great shape, and Hawthorne's not in great shape, and other schools are not in great shape, and there's a lot of competing priorities and a lot of things that need attention, but the teachers deserve to know what is available. I also want to bring up that in February, the Calc, there was another population survey done, and we should know what numbers were submitted to the state, even if we don't know how that's going to change in FAFP Calc IV. If those numbers went up in enrollment, we should expect to get some money back, have an increase in our budget. If they've gone that down again, we should brace for impact. And I've been here a lot, I know a lot of you are tired, tired of hearing from me, I agree with Ms. Surtin that there is a lot of improvement in customer service that can be done for families, I'm one of the families that was run out of the district due to poor customer service. I believe strongly in public, public education, my father was an educator for 50 years in the state of Kentucky. I hope this district gets its act together, our teachers deserve better, our students deserve better, our public deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rush. Do we, Mr. Remchuk, are we doing Calc IV projections based on the February FTE?
I don't have that information in front of me, and I don't like to say stuff in public without having it right in front of me, but...
All right, then that's our answer, our survey three has not closed yet, so we don't have that information yet. Will capital transfer be part of the recovery plan that we get on April 1, Dr. Patton?
Yes.
Okay, that's that answered, and then I know, in terms of the final question with the estimated fund balance after raises, I think, I think the only thing that can be shared is what would have been shared at the open executives, at the open bargaining session, correct?
Right.
So is, was there anything that was shared in that regard?
We did do the fund balance estimate based on their previous proposal, not the one that they brought yesterday, it's a 3.6, and that, the 3.6 that was proposed would put us below 3%. I don't have it right in front of me, I believe it was 2.17%. We were gonna update unit the next executive session, we did receive another proposal from ACEA, but right now, that proposal would also put us below 3%.
Thank you. Ms. Surtin.
So to my, to my colleagues and to the public, I, capital funds, the 1.5 mil can be transferred to, or used for some general fund expenditures, and it's, statute says which, which funds can, but I want to caution us against leaning in on capital funds and general fund, because that does not get to the underlying condition of what we have, and those are the only funds that we have to improve athletic facilities, to improve gyms and locker rooms and things of that nature, fields, which we have, and because there has been a lack of capital planning and, and analysis over the years, if we use that money for operation, like, right now, you can use capital funds for bus driver salaries, you gotta have bus drivers, why would you put, why would you put bus drivers into that particular pool? That's an operational expense, but that's a trick, in my opinion, of the legislature to defund us and to give us, oh, you got this flexibility here, and it alleviates them from, relieves them of the burden of giving us the true cost of transport, so we can't fall into that trap, don't take that bait, and, and once you start using capital funds for a recurring expense, that puts you in that boat to keep having to tap, tap that money, and the needs, the state is not funding capital, that's the reason why we have a Hessen sales tax, they reduced the mileage from the, the 2 mils, from 2 mils to 1.5, and then all of their PICO money goes to charters, so that's why we're leaning in on the Hessen sales tax, so I'm just gonna, don't us, I don't want us to be leaning too hard on capital to balance our budget, because that puts us in another hole.
Yeah, I generally agree with you, too, you know, it can't be a permanent fix, it can't be something that we rely on, and I'm still not convinced that we have enough capital funds, or our capital funds can cover what we need to even just do appropriately for our schools, just making sure they're not falling apart, that we have updated HVAC, you know, I still remember going back to ESER, the top two things that the public wanted us to spend that money on were learning loss and HVAC, and we literally had a plan to spend, what, 40% of the ESER money on HVAC, and then leadership change and that went away, and now we still have schools with poor HVAC facilities, we're, we're still hearing about them, heaters that don't work, AC that doesn't work, air that people know isn't clean, because they're way healthier when they're not at school, so, you know, that's one of those things, too, you know, I agree with Ms. Surtin, because, again, those capital funds should be used to give us good school facilities, schools that our kids are proud to go to, and again, I just go back to my own teaching experience, I just think about everything my students at Lincoln said, and every student, where it's just like, yeah, we have no money, no one cares about us, our school's falling apart, oh, look, something died in the ceiling, so, and again, you know, just all those examples, just driving Ms. Surtin's points home, that we can't rely on those funds.
I think, Dr. Patton, did you have something to add?
Yeah, so you just addressed the capital concerns, and the, and the only other thing I'd add on to that is that when you do put salaries in there, the, the issue is they're reoccurring, it's not a one-time expense, which is what capital things generally are, is a one-time expense, minus like, things like technology that come back every year. Anyway, so I just wanted to let the board members know that I spoke with the Newbury folks a day ago, because I thought I would just ask, since that contract, we don't know, you know, how that's being interpreted, we think we do know that we have the 30 days only to provide a contract, so it did say if it was also mutually agreed to an extension, and I did hear back late yesterday, then, that they, I asked them, could we have an extra week, it's spring break, there's a lot to this one, it's a new thing for us, and they actually said we could, so I thought, you know what, good for you, at least, because it actually does help staff tremendously one more week, you know, and, so anyway, just wanted to be sure you knew that, so...
Thank you for that update, and I appreciate them doing that.
Yeah, me too.
Good to have a little bit of goodwill there. All right. If there's nothing else from any board members, we are adjourned at 2:06.